Good afternoon and welcome to January 18, 2023, regular board meeting of the Gaze County Board of Commissioners. I am Dr. Arthur Riddick, the 2023 Chair of the Board. Attending tonight are Commissioner Jonathan Craddock, Vice Chair, Commissioner Linda Hoffler, Commissioner Brian Rowntree, Commissioner Emily Truman, County Manager Tim Wilson, County Attorney General Honorable Pitt Godwin, Kurt Tudebois, and Lisa Chestnut. And before I continue, I want to announce that this meeting is not being livestreamed. We have many problems with bandwidth of our internet, but it will be recorded and posted. So if someone is texting you, trying to get in touch with you, saying, "I can't see you," that's what's happening. And I'll make that announcement again when we go into the open session. But we are not being livestreamed tonight, but it will be posted. I just talked to Mr. Curry, and he's going to try to get it on sometime late tomorrow, because he has to go back and edit and do all of that. So just tell people to be patient. It will be posted so they can view it, but it's not livestreamed tonight. Okay? Let us stand for open prayer and pledge allegiance to the flag. Heavenly Father, we be thankful that you're here because you are already here, and we welcome you to attend this meeting and to move from heart to heart and breast to breast to make sure that we are spiritually ready to do the business of the county. We pray for those who are sick and shut in and all the other needs that we're not aware of. We know you're going to take care of them. As we move through this meeting, we want to be civil, we want to have order, we can disagree without being disagreeable, and do what we need to do for the citizens of Gaze County. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
I need a motion to go into closed session in North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11, economic development.
Subway.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in closed session.
All right.
We just need to take this. We need to take this.[156.22]
I request a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned as second to come out of closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it. We're out of closed session. Before I move on to the agenda, I have two announcements. Unfortunately, we are having Internet bandwidth issues and the meeting is not being live streamed. It will be recorded, or was being recorded, and will be posted as soon as the IT tech, Mr. Curry, reviews it and posts it. Hopefully, it'll be posted by the end of business tomorrow, if not before. But be patient, and it's not being livestreamed, but it will be recorded so you can view it at a later date. Also, another announcement, I want to welcome our representative, Mr. Bill Ward, to the meeting tonight. Stand up, Mr. Ward. We're glad to have you. Come anytime, just stop right on by.
Right.
Next on the agenda's approval of the agenda, we need to amend the agenda. There's a proposed new meeting schedule for the Board of Commissioners. I think it's in your packet, and we need to add that to the agenda. Do everyone have a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda so they can be briefly discussed?
So moved.
Sir.
Been properly moved as second that we amend the agenda to include the proposed draft of the Board of Commissioners' meeting schedule. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it, we'll add that. Madam Clerk.
Aye.
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 Item I on the new business.
Okay. It's under G.
G.
Okay, it's already done. She's quicker than I am. All right. The consent agenda is next. No, yes, it is. Consent agenda is next on the agenda. I think we have a remove. Commissioner Cratter?
Madam Chair, I would like to move K, Request for Surplus 2002 Parka Boat and Trailer. I'd like to pull that from the consent agenda and add it under Old Business as G.
Madam Clerk, do you have that? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Now we have the introduction of a new hire, Ms. Wanda Hoffler, Finance Building Collections Representative. Is she in the House yet? Oh, there you are, coming up. Mr. County Manager.
Hey.
Yes, I'd just like to introduce, she's the newest addition, she's working as a customer representative in the Finance Department. Welcome.
Thank you.
I've heard you're with us for a good long time.
Thank you.
Well, welcome. You know everybody on the day you see them?
I know most of them. I know one really well.
All right. You can say their name, please. Well, anyway, say your name, starting with Commissioner Roundtree.
Yes, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
John Craddock, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Linda Hoffler, welcome aboard.
Emily Truman, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Good job, glad to have you.
And Dr. Riddick, Board Chair, I've seen you around, didn't know you were. I think you were at the appreciation luncheon?
Yes.
That's when I ran into you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Trying to get something to eat?
Yes.
Well, thank you for your service that you're going to provide, and I mean, that your time here is productive and gratifying. Thank you.
I hope so too. I think it will be. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Take care.
We have a part-time employee, an EMT, Jason. You and Billy. Oh, he's sending Billy by himself. Come on, Billy. Come up there to the podium. Tell us your name.
My name's William Tutwiler, as people call me Billy.
Okay. Last name again?
Tutwiler.
Tutwiler.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And your position is?
Part-time deputy EM and fire inspector.
Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you.
We also wish to hope that your time here is productive. Do you know, I know Commissioner Roundtree, introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm Brian Roundtree, Commissioner. Welcome aboard, look forward to your service.
Thank you.
John Craddock, I believe we met at lunch the other day.
Just the other day?
Welcome aboard.
Linda Hoffler, I believe I met you at lunch the other day as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Emily Truman, welcome.
Picked me out, I think you expect my name.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have public comments?
Yes. First is David Forsyte, Water System, MBOB.
All right, I'm David Forsyte from Corr Peak, North Carolina. Good evening, everyone, Commissioners, Sheriff and staff, members of the public, and county staff. I think it was a real nice introduction. I'd like to say, first off, I wanted to thank the Water Department, they did a repair on Desert Road finally. It washed out really bad, mentioned it to them, they went back and repaired it even better. It's really holding up great. I made a point to personally thank the guys, and that's a great thing. The person that lived there really was very appreciative of it being proved. But moving on, so I want to begin by addressing the rolling string of comments, especially those uttered at the last Commissioners' meeting, which I did watch, I came here initially, but ended up speaking to the school board, about showing mutual respect for each other. I think that's a great idea, but it must apply to us all. What I mean by that is, members of the public speaking as we address our elected officials, and those officials who sometimes like to call themselves "public servants," but also when we are engaging law enforcement as they strive to protect us, when we talk about our fellow citizens, even when we don't agree with their ideas, but so too when we're talking to our subordinates or to our employees, like county employees, for instance. And frequently, though, people in power and narcissistic individuals always demand respect but don't want to give the very same thing they insist upon, so let's hold ourselves to the same standard that we want to apply to others. And I remember from church, "You reap what you sow," so let's all sow goodwill and not contempt for those who've elected us or who are employed by us. Now, on to some of the county's business tonight. Water rates are suddenly being increased. I attended your last special meeting. I don't fault it automatically as everything is increasing with inflation that these two last years, that I'm sure the cost for operating our water system has also increased. I looked online, and our rates, even with the increases, proposed are still comparable to our neighboring counties. But my question is, why is this so suddenly an issue at your last special meeting, which, by the way, isn't so special if you have one every month, and there's a real reason it's called a special meeting, so it isn't routine and so the public can't speak? I'm not sure. So, anyway, not necessary. Anyway, we suddenly need money for the system. Where is the background for this emerging requirement? Please share with us what specifically is driving this, more than some platitudes, or as my dad would say, "Tell us the rest of the story." I wonder if it would be as desperate if we still had $600,000 set aside, but I'm okay with that. Next, suddenly moving the Board of Elections pops up on the agenda again. What the heck? We're talking about moving a state of North Carolina nominated board that has resided there for a long time. The excuse being that the structure is a The excuse being that the structure is a Rosenwald building, and I hate to say it, but that rings hollow to me, and here's why I say it. It was proposed for the State of Zor preservation listing back in 2011. So for 11 years, there's been no issue with it being there. No complaints, no need for that space for other county functions, no concerns about the care or viability of that building, nothing. Then along comes 22. We have Homeland Security come and say the building needs some significant upgrades for the safety of the staff and the public. Nobody wants to argue with Homeland Security unless you want to end up being searched, or, anyway, just kidding. The money for those security improvements is put in the county manager's budget, still no problems yet. This is most just indirectly discussed in these previous meetings we've had. But when the Board of Elections wants to go through with the purchase to make these improvements, suddenly, there's no money and it's claimed to be a mistake in the budget. And this, to me, something smells fishy, and saying it's a Rosenwald building as a reason to move seems silly. These security repairs will only help to ensure the continued health and welfare of this historic structure. So we next talked about moving them to the Health Department building, that I might assess as an environmental engineer, is having what is known as sick building syndrome. Do you really want to force more people into this much certainly less healthy building? The moldy odor is tough. We are pushing this now. Homeland Security then needs to come and assess the health of that building, and delay another couple of years addressing the security of the Board of Elections. This reeks of some vindictiveness by someone. So I urge the individual Commissioners during their time to speak to explain some of the stuff that goes on in these work sessions. Sure, some stuff the county attorney will want to tell you to keep confidential, but not every detail of what is happening needs to be kept from the public. You are public servants, please try sharing more information, you'll get our support a lot more often when we know what's happening, instead of having a special meeting and suddenly something's on the agenda.
John Kettrell, Water and Dispatch.
Good evening. Water system. I'm in favor of the proposed rate increase. I think it's modest and needed to sustain the profitability of the system. I encourage you to replace the water meters as soon as possible. I would like to commend Brad Arnold and his diligence in fixing leaks and hydrants. I've been seeing him around the county, and it seems like he's making some real good progress, so he should be commended for that. Central Communications. I stood up here September 21st, at y'all's request for comments from the chiefs, and gave you detailed information on why I thought that it was a good idea to move the Central Communications under the sheriff, and how it affected the first responders, especially to the fire service. I spoke again about it October 19th, because it wasn't on the agenda on that meeting. We're in January, it's not on the agenda tonight. I don't understand. Chawan County provides a blueprint, it works there, so why can't we just mimic what they do? And I found out in recent weeks that the county manager could have already moved it, didn't even need a resolution from y'all. So please get this finalized as soon as possible. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Taylor, I'm the chief of the Gates Volunteer Fire Department and president of the Firemen's Association here in Gates County. Speaking on behalf of the Gates, of the Firemen's Association, we noted how important a good and dependable communication system to our rescue squad and to our sheriff's office. Tonight, I want to emphasize the importance of good, dependable communications to approximately 130 volunteer fire personnel. We are often the first responders. We need to know where we're going and what we expect when we get there. We feel that this information is the best relayed by people who knew Gates County. The Firemen's Association of Gates County is requesting that the Gates County Communication Department to be assigned to the leadership of the Gates County Sheriff's Office as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, it's been a while since I've been up here, just having to work every day, there seems to be a meeting. But I live in Gatesville, member of the Volunteer Fire Department in Gatesville. I know some time ago, we talked about the dispatch center moving over to the sheriff's office, and based on my knowledge, being in the service for 33 years, just about every entity is under a sheriff's department. Very few are under a fire department, or they're their own entity. This is nothing against the emergency manager, but the true definition of emergency manager is somebody that looks out for the welfare of the county as far as storm preparation and all that stuff. I don't know him personally, and like I said, this is nothing on him, but it just seems like he's got a lot to do. I saw this guy roll up on a house fire across the street. He's up a ladder, cutting holes in the side of the house. It's not his job, but he loves doing it. And I think that's great to have somebody involved in it like that. And if there's one thing that you could take off his plate to free him up to do other stuff, that should be one of them. The sheriff is right there. And if you ever get an opportunity to listen to dispatch, you will hear the thankless job that they do, especially when they only have one dispatcher, and they've got multiple channels to listen to. Calls go unanswered, every day. We've got some good dispatchers. When you listen to it, there's some really darn good dispatchers in there. We still haven't addressed the problem with, we had three people that were hired and quit because of a certain issue in the dispatch center. As far as I know, that hasn't changed. The other night, I was listening, and I heard the dispatch come back and tell them that the caller called 911, called the sheriff's department, a bunch of idiots for not resolving their issue. Legally, there's some issues they can't resolve, because it's not in their wheelhouse. So, I mean, the sheriff's office, if you look at Facebook, if you read paper, all that stuff, you see the great job they're doing, trying to rid us of all these drugs, going to these houses with all these complaints. And it just seems like that there's a disconnect between this board here and them, and it needs to be solved. I mean, it needs to go to them, let them go ahead and run it, give them what they need to do their job, this is all we all want to do, is our job. And like I say, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank you for the purchase of the radios, they've been a tremendous help. But those radios do us no good if we've got nobody to answer them on the other side. And that happens a lot. All you gotta do is listen. Get your radio from the sheriff's office or from the fire department, just listen. All you gotta do is listen. And it's all night, it's all day and all night, just continually, on and on and on and on and on. Call volumes increased, it's gonna keep increasing. You cannot do that job and keep one person in that dispatch center all the time. It just is not gonna work. So, we need to push to hire more people, whether it's money incentive, a leadership change, staffing change, they've even got directors. So you have the sheriff running, basically overseeing it, and then they have a dispatch, a 911 director. So that person deals with the dispatch center, but then answers to the sheriff. So the sheriff doesn't have to do a one-on-one all the time. They've got that in Chawan. And the guy says, all you do is look what they do. There's a lot of models to go by, and we've got a lot to learn from that, and we can do it quickly, if somebody would just take the time to go and do that. And these radios take a lot of maintenance. You know, that new radio system is quite advanced. You just don't put them out there and just leave them alone. Somebody's gotta maintain them, somebody's gotta tune them. So that's a big job for just one person to do, and to ask the sheriff to do that by himself, that ain't gonna work, he's gonna need help. So just think that in the future, when you start looking at adding extra staff, you're gonna need some more people for that dispatch center, you're gonna need somebody in charge of those people at the dispatch center, and they can answer to the sheriff. Ta ga.
Before we move on to the special guest we have on the list, I want the county attorney to address the transfer of the 911 center to the sheriff's office, please. I turned that over to the county attorney to work on that whole process. So I'm hearing that we haven't transferred, and we have not, so I asked the attorney to, please go over that, please.
Yes, ma'am. Sheriff Campbell has presented to me, and I have given to each of the board members tonight, plan of operation, mission and vision, staffing and organizational chart, which I think he's done a good job on. It has the sheriff at the top, director, PSAP supervisor, eight full-time telecommunications, and eight part-time. So with this information, I would hope that y'all would have enough information now to make a decision, put it on, and I told the sheriff it would need to be put on the agenda for the next meeting, so that y'all could have a chance to look at this, and we could y'all could vote on it at that time.
Mr. Godwin, when did we ask for this information?
Well, the sheriff has provided me with a couple of different scenarios, but this is the most thorough answer to the questions that we were asking. And I believe there was an email maybe sent out to everyone in regards to what you were looking for from the sheriff, and I don't think there was a complete response from all of the Commissioners as to what they were looking for.
I think this process started back in October. Am I correct?
Yes.
Started back in...
September 21st.
It started back in October with the request, and that's when I asked the fire chiefs and all the first responders to provide support for the transfer. That's what Mr. Kitchell was talking about, and he did. That was back in, I don't know, I forgot the email.
September 21st.
I'm talking to the county attorney. So when you come to the podium, and you say we're dragging our feet, we're not dragging our feet, we're waiting for a comprehensive plan, so we can move it, so we know what we're getting, not getting into, but what we had to fund, how it's gonna work, what we need to tweak or whatever. That's what we've been waiting for, and I think you got the agenda, I mean, not the agenda, the planning, yesterday?
Yes, that's correct.
So now we have it before us, so now we can look at it as the Board of Commissioners, and see if that's acceptable to all the Board of Members. Go back to the county attorney, so he can start drafting the resolution, and hopefully, we'll have it done by February. Can you get it done?
That would be the plan, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Truman, you wanted to jump in?
You asked a date, I was just trying to clarify for you, that's all.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Okay.
The authority with this service resides solely with this board, and is not within the authority of the county manager to delegate it to any other authority. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Thank you.
It's the boards to say.
And we put parameters out there for the transfer of the 911 to the sheriff. We have to do it with what's required, there's all the statutes and everything that I've worked with the county attorney with. We're just trying to do it right, make sure that the transfer is smooth, and that he has what he needs on paper. We wanted to see a plan, so we know how to fund it, we're getting ready to go into the budget, so that's what we've tried to do. So, and when we asked the Commissioners to send in to the county, I mean, to the county attorney, about the first plan that we received, he received three responses from the board. Not unanimous, but it was unanimous, but I was wanting to have input from all the board members. That said, as soon as we look at this, if you have any questions, Commissioners, please send them to the attorney for clarification or addressing, so that we can get this done and move on, and make sure that 911 is sufficiently staffed, and whatever they need, they will receive.
We should put a timeline on when we should have answers back.
If you can have the answers back by Monday, because you have, you know, the weekend, I mean, you have a chance to look at it. See, when it came in yesterday, we haven't had a chance to even, I haven't seen it, until the county attorney handed it to me today. So now, each one of you have a copy, so now you can take a look at it. If you have any questions or concerns, or say, approve, just let the county attorney know. That's all you gotta do. And I say Monday, I don't want to push you.
Yes, by, you know, in the afternoon, I've got court going.
Okay, all right. Monday before the close of day, you know, send it to his attention, to fill his administrative assistant, so that he can start drafting that resolution, so that he can get it back to us in a time and matter, so we can look at it for completion. Get it back to him by the time we have another regular board meeting. And finally, I'm gonna address special meetings. Special meetings are work sessions. I made that quite clear last summer, that we can't do all the work in one meeting, and that's why our special meeting is held, and that the topics are very strict, you only can do or discuss what's on the topic. That's why we have special meetings. And the public can come and sit, just like you're doing there, and listen to what we're doing, and we make, you know, recommendations, approvals, this, that, and the other, have special guests at that one topic. So a special meeting is just what it says. It affords you the opportunity to take one or two topics, really delve into them, and get some work done, because we only have one regular meeting during the month. We have board members that work, and trying to have a regular meeting twice a month is insensitive to the work needs and the family needs of the Commissioners. So that's why we have special meetings. We cannot have Ms. Beverly Stroud here, the CPA of the company that we hired, to help us out until we can recruit and hire a finance director, because we don't have the bandwidth for internet, she was gonna be on Zoom. So we're gonna delay that until we can get that resolved in the county, in this room, in this building. So I'm going to go next to the audit report, Tim Lyons. Tim Lyons will be presenting our audit report from Morgan Jenkins, CPA. We have an audit, and the report is completely submitted, they come and do a presentation about what they found, or whatever. I had a discussion with Mr. Lyons a couple of weeks ago, and I asked him to really delve into the enterprise fund, proprietary funds, things like that, the fiscal health of this county, and the audit itself, because the board, we need to really pay attention to certain things, and I wanted him to do more than just, you know, report on the audit, or give us a little. So I gave him a heads up, so he wouldn't have to say, "I get back with you." So, Mr. Lyons?
Great, thank y'all for having me here tonight. I believe that each one of you have a copy of my presentation in front of you, and that's kind of predominantly what I'm gonna speak from tonight, which is just a PowerPoint presentation, if you will, I think it's gonna be up there on the screen as well. But on the second slide here, we have just a kind of a quick agenda, I know y'all have a lot of business to get to tonight, so we'll go over the results of the audit. We do have a few slides on some financial ratios and trends, ones that we think are important to look at, when we look at county governments in North Carolina, but also ones that the state LGC looks at when we complete the audit, and the uploads, and all the things the state requires. Some comments and recommendations that we had from the audit, and I've got a slide at the end for questions and comments, but certainly y'all can stop me as I'm going if there's anything that comes up. On the next slide, we have just an overview of the engagement team, we've been working with Gates County for a couple of years now, but just to remind y'all of the different roles that we play on the engagement team. I served as the engagement partner, which means that I was ultimately responsible for the quality of the audit that was done, for signing off on our engagement, for signing our reports. And then we had, I have a senior associate named Chad Jackson, who worked with me in my office, he's worked on the county's audit for two years now, and he's also a CPA, and was kind of responsible for the day-to-day running of the audit. On the next slide, we have kind of the results of the audit, if you will. That first bullet point about our responsibility just kind of goes over what the objective of the audit is, what the purpose of, kind of what we're doing. The purpose of our audit is to express an opinion on the county's financial statements, and this is for the fiscal year ended June 30th of 2022. The financial statements are the responsibility of management, and we've been engaged to audit them and express an opinion on them. That second main bullet point on the slide there is about our opinion. We issued an unmodified opinion on the county's financial statements, that's a fancy accounting and auditing term for a clean opinion, there is no higher or better opinion to get. So what that means is, you look at the county's financial report, we consider the numbers that you see there regarding the county's financial position, results of its operations and cash flows to be materially correct for the fiscal year ended June 30th of 2022. 2022. Starting on the next slide and really what goes for the next couple of slides are what are known as our required communications. Auditing standards in the United States of America require me to communicate certain things to the board, the conclusion of an audit. We're required to do that in writing, and that's what I've done, by submitting this to you. So I'm not going to go through and read every single one of these, but I do think a few of these are particularly important to hear from the auditor to the board, so I'll touch on a couple of those. In these first two bullets about accounting policies and estimates, financial statements, unfortunately, I would love for everything to be black and white and there to be no gray, but accounting, financial statements now, they have a lot of estimates that go into producing these financial statements. Estimates about pension and OPEB liabilities, estimates about uncollectible accounts and those types of things. And so we have to look at the accounting policies and the inputs that management uses for those estimates to make sure that they're reasonable, being consistently applied, that we've not taken any aggressive positions or we don't have any accounting policies that are, you know, non-standard or way out of bounds. And so we do that and we didn't see any of those types of policies or positions taken by the county. So I think that's an important thing for the board to hear. On the next slide, we talk about our relationship with management. Through the conduct of the audit, we request access to a lot of information, a lot of documentation and a lot of different people in various parts of the county's operations. And we had full cooperation from the county's management. We didn't feel like we were being, information was being withheld. We didn't feel like we were not given access to people we needed to talk to. This would probably be the time where I would thank Kim, the former finance director, for all of her help. I know she's not here any longer, but full cooperation from management during the conduct of the audit. And then lastly, on the next slide, our auditor independence. You know, the crux of the audit depends upon Malden Jenkins and myself being able to say that we are independent of the county, which means we can't participate in any sort of management decisions. We can't be involved in the creation of the numbers or the reporting, truly have to be independent, both in accordance with our ethical standards, but also in accordance with government auditing standards, which is even more stringent than just our normal AICPA rules. So, and we meet all of those criteria. No, there were no fees paid to us for management advisory services during the year. We were just paid to conduct an audit of the county's financial statements. On the next slide, as you all know, in conjunction with our financial statement audit, we're also required to conduct compliance audits on the county's major federal and state programs. This year, we audited two programs, the Medicaid cluster, which is required to be audited every year by the state of North Carolina, and the CDBG cluster, which was a major program for the county this year. We did not have to audit any state programs because the county did not hit that $500,000 threshold of state programs to be audited. Y'all are probably looking at that and seeing, and one of the things I've been telling folks that, for counties and cities that we serve that have not had to have an audit over their ARPA funds yet, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, ARPA, CSL, FRF, whatever everyone is calling that nowadays, that's because while y'all, while the county had received those funds by June the 30th, they had not spent them. And so until those funds are actually spent, we don't do an audit over those because it's driven by the expenditures and when those expenditures incur. So likely we'll be conducting an audit over those funds either in this coming fiscal year or certainly by the next fiscal year because the funds have to be spent within that timeframe. The next couple of slides have a few just financial performance indicators. This first slide looks at the general funds, the composition of the general funds' fund balance from year to year. Kind of the main trend you'll see here from '21 to '22 is that there was an increase in restricted fund balance. Restricted fund balance is where we have, we have assets and items that were sitting on at year end where the use of those is restricted by some sort of an outside reason. The biggest reason for that increase was that at June the 30th, the proceeds from the note payable that was issued to finance the new radios had not been fully spent yet. And so that money has to be set aside and be shown as restricted because the county can't just spend that money on something else. So while we did have an overall increase in fund balance in the general fund, it's important to note that of that increase in the fund balance, that a chunk of that was related to the issuance of that note and is sitting in the restricted fund balance. So overall, the county's unassigned fund balance, which is the fund balance that's available for spending at the county's discretion in future years, it did decrease slightly from fiscal year '21 to '22, but as you'll see on the next slide, is still well in excess of the minimum required by the state. State has a minimum threshold of 20%. The median of similar units, so counties in the state that are that are in the same kind of population category, general fund expenditure category as Gates County, the average of those units is 39 to 40%. As you can see, the county is a little bit above that at June the 30th. On the next slide, we do have a snapshot of the county's proprietary funds for the fiscal year ended June the 30th of 2022. Both the landfill fund and the water fund generated positive cash flow from operations, which is, which is a metric that the LGC does look at when they, when we upload the report. There are some calculations that are run behind the scenes and they're going to look at specifically that second thing, that cash flow indicators where it says, look, we want to know what were your operating expenses? We take depreciation expense out of that because it's a non-cash item, but what were your operating expenses? And then in addition to your operating expenses, we look at principal and debt, or principal and interest on your debt to make sure that we're generating enough cash flow to pay those things. So the LGC requires that it at least be greater than zero. And as you can see, at June the 30th, for the fiscal year ended, the county's cash flow was about $133,000 above that. I do think it's important to point out, though, that for the current year, the proprietary funds did not include any additions to capital assets. We had no capital spending in the current year. A lot of times that can be cash flow from operations. We see being used to then fund capital purchases and repairs and maintenance on the system. We didn't have any of those in the current year. And so at the bottom, we have our net position, which is just kind of a snapshot of the equity positions of the funds. That unrestricted net position did increase in the water fund this year from about $1.3 million the previous year to about $1.5 million. A big chunk of that increase, though, is the result of the pension liabilities going down. The elders, the investment in the elders' plan had a really good year, as everybody's kind of portfolios did up until '22. And when '22 happened, now it's kind of gone the other way. So we're expecting pension liabilities, while they all kind of went down this year for financial reporting, they're going to turn around and go back up next year. So just something to keep in mind. On the next slide, we have two what are called, you know, management letter comments. These are, these are comments that we issue that, in a letter that we can, that we consider just to be recommendations, things that we think are important to point out. The first one is about this, the documentation of the financial reporting process. We've actually shared this with the county for a couple of years now, and unfortunately, I think this is kind of where you find where the, where having something like this would be really beneficial with Kim not being here now. And I know y'all are contracting with a third party to help out, but having documentation of the financial closeout and financial reporting process is important and we recommend the county do that, just to have that really well-written and well-documented. And then with regard to the utility funds related to billing and internal controls, every year during the audit, we submit what are called internal control questionnaires to the county. We ask management to review them and indicate internal, recommended internal controls, whether they are in place or not. There were a few where Kim noted that she was still working on them, so it's kind of a work in progress. You know, basically, we think that those controls should be implemented, having to do with periodic reviewing of delinquent receivables, you know, how those delinquent receivables are followed up on and those types of things. So, you know, should county management have any questions about those specific recommendations, we can certainly share those. We can share those with the third party that you all have engaged going forward, if need be, as well. The next couple of slides that I have are really just comments and recommendations on new accounting standards, things that the county needs to be paying attention to going forward. I don't really need to get into these unless y'all really want me to, but I don't think you really want me to stand up here and talk about technical accounting things, but, but just, you know, we, we provide these to all of our clients just as a reminder of things that will be coming that would potentially have an impact on the county's financial statements in future years. And then on the second to last slide, like I always point out about our free quarterly continuing education, we offer this, it's on the next slide. We offer free quarterly continuing education for all of our clients. While it does typically revolve around technical accounting topics, we do at least one non-accounting topic every year. We've touched on HR, risk management, budgeting, IT. If any of y'all would like to be on the email distribution list that we have, feel free to let me know and I can add you to our distribution list. And so with that, that kind of concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions that y'all may have for me at this time.
Mr. Lyons, we talked about on the phone about the submission of our audit and the timeliness you talked about.
Yes. So we, the audit was submitted, the LGC has a deadline of December the 1st. So audits submitted after December the 1st are considered late. We started working with the county in 2018 and had been nowhere near meeting that deadline for a host of reasons. That first audit was very delayed and Kim kind of came into the middle part of that. And so this was the first time that I've been working with the county that it was submitted on time. It was turned into the state a couple of weeks in advance of the December 1st deadline. So the county's audit was completed and, you know, we certainly hope, I know with, with Kim leaving, we developed a really good working relationship with Kim and we hope that, you know, the steps that y'all are taking now to find, to find somebody to take over, that we would hope to continue the trend of getting the audits done and submitted timely.
Any comments or clarification from the commissioners? I thank you, Mr. Lyons. Every time you come, we have a good conversation and we're going to try to continue the relationship. I just want the audience in the meeting and eventually see this that we are in good financial shape in this county and we're submitting our audits on time, we're doing what we're supposed to do, and we got plans or strategies in place to continue that until we can recruit and identify a finance director. I want to thank the staff, Ms. Roundtree, Ms. Walker. I think Chrissy Byram is helping out. I know even the board clerk is helping out the county manager to hold on until we can get someone identified. And so I just want to publicly thank them for all the hard work they're doing and will do until we can get, you know, fully staffed again. So thank you for coming.
All right, thank y'all for having me.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Bob Steinberg. Mr. Steinberg's been here since 3 o'clock. We gave him a tour of the community center and the land that we purchased and had a very good conversation and a very good tour. So I just want him to take some broad strokes. We engaged him as a lobbyist for us to help us identify funding for some of our projects going forward. And I wanted him here tonight so that since we have signed the contract, now they can see that this is our lobbyist. And I want him to share with you some of the things broadly, what he intends to do for and with this county.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. Thank you so much. A delight to be with you here today and certainly had a wonderful visit, seeing some of the facilities here in Gates County that are very important to the, to the county moving forward and some of the needs that you have presented to me. It seems to me that one of the most important things that will need to be addressed moving forward is the infrastructure needs of the county, as it relates to water and sewer in particular. These are things that all of the counties, or many of the counties, I should say, in northeastern North Carolina are facing right now. We have an aging infrastructure system and a lot of the, a lot of these systems are really, are hanging by a thread, so to speak. And so the day of reckoning is coming. Fortunately for you all and for the state of North Carolina, we have a significant amount of money in the general assembly that is being, will be appropriated here in the next session and the next couple of sessions to address that particular need, which is, which is infrastructure. And that is going to be one of the things that I am, you have charged me with, to represent you, to try and go and secure, help secure the funds necessary to make the investments that are going to be required for this county and for many counties in the northeast, but we're talking about Gates County tonight, for them to be able to firm up their infrastructure and be in a position where they can move forward safely. So that, that's basically what, what we're doing. And I just wondered where all the noise was coming. You never know these days. You get these public meetings, let me see, what am I listening to?
That's the Gates Financial Fire Department.
Ah, wonderful. They do a great job. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, you do a great job. So I also had the opportunity and have had the opportunity ongoing here since we began our discussions before you enlisted me as your lobbyist, to get an idea as to where the county wants to go as it relates to trying to increase the tax base, but in a very, very logical way, in a controlled way, not massive growth or sprawl, but certainly things that can be done that will help each one of the citizens of this county and will improve their quality of life as, as well as the bottom line as far as they're concerned. There is a certain amount of growth that is unavoidable. It's going to happen. There are those that think that you can just stay just the way you are. Gates County can stay just exactly the way they are and nothing will ever change. Well, with or without the actions of this board, the things are going to change because growth is inevitable. You're going to have it. So you all are in a position to be able to determine what you can do to try and control that growth and what kind of growth you're going to have. And it will be my job, and my job to, along with Mr. Stansel, to try and do your bidding. Those things that you have identified that you need to have funded in the budget, it is my job, along with your representatives, to try and secure that funding. So first and foremost, I think we're going to be looking at moving forward, we will be looking at the significant infrastructure needs that this county and many of the counties in northeastern North Carolina are, are trying to seek.
Anyone have any other further comments or questions for Mr. Steinberg?
Yes, Madam Secretary, I have a question for Mr. Steinberg. You know Mr. Steinberg?
Yes, sir. Good to see you again, sir.
I see you also. Most counties have a economic developer and that can be very costly. Are there any consortiums, economic consortiums, which we can align with, Gates County can align with, to perhaps have a joint economic developer?
Well, the northeast, there are certain counties, some of the counties that are in a more comfortable position financially, although we just heard your financial report and it looks very good. But some counties, the larger counties in particular, have their own economic developers, as you have, you know, rightfully identified. I think the commissioners, generally speaking, as a matter of fact, I believe that Representative Ward was in a meeting today where a number of folks came together and they were talking about some of the concerns of the, of the region and of those counties that were present. And I think we're going to see more of that, whether in an official capacity or an unofficial capacity, there certainly needs to be conversation. Now, whether you all would want to have an economic developer or not, that, that will be up to this board. If you want to certainly hire one, then you can do that. But it's, there's a number of things that are going to have to be done before you even get to that point, and I, and that's these infrastructure needs. Because you don't need an economic developer who's trying to bring Because you don't need an economic developer who's trying to bring business into the county, uh, and, and, and not have the infrastructure to be able to support that, that business. So I think, uh, you know, from my conversations with you today and the, and the rest of your board, it seems to me that you, you have identified what needs to be done first, and I think rightfully so, and that's infrastructure. And then, uh, once that has been, uh, identified, not just identified but addressed, we get the infrastructure in place, then, then you'll have all sorts of options that, uh, you can take a look at. And one of those might be, in fact, um, having a, an economic developer. Now, I did mention something to you when we were talking earlier that I think is very important. And that, and actually was, uh, addressing a question that you had, uh, to me earlier about, uh, uh, jobs being created without smokestacks and so on and so forth. And as I had pointed out, uh, to the board and will point out, uh, to all who are listening, you are in a position where Gates County is part of the foreign trade zone with the Port of Norfolk and, and, uh, and you will, uh, the Port Authority of Virginia. And being designated as such means that there are real opportunities for businesses to locate here that are involved with the port. There's tax advantages, there's job opportunities as it relates to, uh, places of assembly, disassembly, shipping, uh, receiving, all of those kinds of things. Tidewater, where the Port Authority is located, they are maxed out in space. They just, there's not really any room for them to expand. And that was one of the reasons why, uh, we, uh, and I, I will, uh, take credit for this one, 'cause it was the first thing I did when I went into the general assembly, was, uh, to try and secure foreign trade zone status for these counties up here in North Carolina. And it's, uh, and that is something that not everybody has in the state, I mean, very few counties have in the state. So that's gonna be, uh, once this infrastructure in place, that's gonna be an opportunity you are going to have to be able to recruit business here. You've got, uh, you're, you're also gonna have to address housing and, and, and other things. But, uh, there's, I think the future looks very bright, uh, for Gates County and I think the vision, as I've seen it, even the limited vision that I've seen so far, uh, is certainly a, a, a bright one. And I think your priorities are straight as it relates to, uh, the infrastructure focus first. Thank you for your question.
Thank you, sir, uh, for your visit and the tour, they taking time with us to tour the parts of the county.
Thank you.
And to address our needs and thank you for what you're going to do. I expect to see both of you, Mr. Bill Ward and Steinberg, more in Gates County, um, looking at the jewel that we are.
You are indeed. And, and, and I look forward to working with all of you and certainly, uh, I'm only up the road about 30, 35, well, not even that, maybe 30, 35 minutes in either. So I can be here at, at any given time, just need a holler. But I'll be keeping in touch with all of you and informing you of the progress that we're making as it relates to these needs, once they have been firmly identified and, and then, uh, my, uh, the progress that I may be making and hope to be making and I'm sure will be making, addressing those with the general assembly. So, uh, Madam Chair, Dr. Riddick, I thank you very much. Viking pride.
Viking pride.
Yes, great to see you.
Thank you.
Great to see you all.
Thank you for coming. Representative Ward, I'm gonna give you the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, it's very good to be here in front of you and see you. Uh, we haven't had the opportunity to come to a county commissioner meeting prior to this time, but we're glad to be here. Uh, we're here to listen to your concerns and what you, what your needs are here within the county. As Mr. Steinberg alluded to, I did attend to a, a, a meeting today, earlier today, uh, Chamber of Commerce held meeting. There were several counties represented. Um, the, the gist of the situation is we have to stop looking at ourselves as individual counties. We have to stop looking at ourselves as a district. We have to look at ourselves as a region. Our northeast region here is unique, is unlike any other place in the state. We're in a position now where we can start working towards regionalization and moving forward regionalization for the area. Of course, my obligation is gonna be to the 5th District, which includes the four counties. But also, we're gonna have to consider the fact that this region has, is in a position where we're going to see growth. It's inevitable, it's gonna happen, and the only way we can accommodate that growth is with infra- infrastructure. And that's not just sewer water, it's not just, uh, uh, trash pickup, it's EMS, it's fire, it's law enforcement. So we're gonna have to work towards getting funding for that. The legislature's in a situation right now where we do have, uh, a, a very good fund, we have our rainy day fund, uh, and that's there for a purpose in the event of an emergency, statewide emergency, so that we can continue to maintain and operate our, our state government. But funding is looking really good. In fact, uh, we're looking at a reduction in the, in the personal income tax. It's going down to 3.99% uh, because of the, the manner in which, uh, the legislature has been able to increase our funding. So, we're here to hear your concerns, we want to learn what's going on specifically here in the county, as well as the region, our district and region, so that we can all work together as legislators in Raleigh for you and for the citizens of our, our region. Let's, have any questions?
Any questions?
Do you have your office set up? I know, and with your telephone numbers and all.
Yes, ma'am, I do have an office. I haven't gotten my business card yet. The printing office in Raleigh has not gotten that taken care of, but I do have a, uh, I'm at the Legislative Office Building, 300, uh, South Salisbury, I'm sorry, yeah, South Salisbury Street, and I'm in office number 418A as in Adam.
You will be getting a visit from Mr. Craddock.
I'm sorry?
You will be getting a visit from Mr. Craddock.
I hope so.
Oh, he's coming.
He'll buy me lunch.
Oh, he's coming. He's gonna thank you for, uh, your enthusiasm and your attention to the region. Um, and congratulations on your appointment to the appropriations committee.
Yes, ma'am.
See, I watch you. I, you and Steinberg, y'all gonna have to do something about Gates County, I'm telling you right now.
Well, it's a beautiful region, we love it.
It is.
We love our, we love our region, we love our district, and, um, I, I'm, I'm happy to say that I've seen that based on the, the tier ranking system, Gates County has moved to a tier two county from tier one.
It has.
Uh, that's, that's, uh, that's a good thing. So.
Well, thank you. Now, if Mr. Craddock comes, he's, he's gonna, he's not coming for lunch.
I'm sorry?
The Mr. Craddock business, he's not coming for lunch, I'm telling you that right now. He gonna have a list.
Dang, I was hoping to get a freebie out of that.
Nah, nah, we don't, we don't wanna, no, we don't wanna get in trouble. He gonna have a list. Thank you, sir, for taking the time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chairperson.
Have a safe trip.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm requesting a motion on the floor to open the public hearing for, uh, relative to the water rates and fees.
Send it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is open and I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Brad Arnold, Utility Director. Where's Brad? Where's Brad? Mr. Brad Arnold is the Director of Public Utilities and he will be presenting, uh, the proposed changes of, uh, select water rates and fees.
Good afternoon, what have y'all, members of the public? You're all gonna have to bear with me, I have new glasses, first time wearing bifocals, so you're not used to me yet.
Take your time.
Currently, we are billing a base rate of, uh, $12 per month. Um, I think it was, was it January they started bi-monthly billing? Um, so that would be s- six billing cycles per year. So the minimum rate would be 12, uh, excuse me, $24 base minimum for two months period. Um, right now, yeah, right now, it's $12 per month base minimum and currently it's at $3 per thousand gallons after the first 2,000 gallons. We have asked the board to raise the water rates from the current base rate of $24 per month, or excuse me, every two months, to $34 a month. That, that equals out to $5 a month base rate. And we've also asked to increase the thousand gallons after the first 2,000 gallons of an increase from $3 to $5. So based on our current, uh, billing rate at $12 base rate times approximately 4,500 meters, that is, that comes up to $54,000 a month of income or funds. And you times that, times 12, and that's $648,000 a year. With the new proposed rate increase, which will raise, uh, the monthly billing rate from, well, to $34 bi-monthly, that'd be 17, or, excuse me, I'll do it on a monthly basis 'cause that's the way I have it written up. It'll go from, uh, 12 to $17. So you would take $17 times 45, approximately 4,500 meters, and that would increase from $54,000 a month to $76,500 a month. And you multiply it by 12, and when you would get an increase from $648,000 a year to $918,000 So you're looking at an increase based on current rates to proposed rates from, it would increase our revenue by $270,000, which is about roughly a 29.5% increase in revenue.
Before I open it up for public comment or, or, you know, just, is there anything you should wanna share about raising the rates, why we raising the rate? You've given us all the, um, the money as far as the funding or the increase in the rates. I know we're working on the water system. Okay?
Correct. Um, one of the reasons for raising the, the rates are to cover the operating costs of our water system. As most of y'all know, that supplies and materials has gone through the roof, they're, they're just steadily increasing. Um, and overall, we were, we were, you know, a little low on our water rates. Uh, a lot of factors come into water rates, which is, um, but we were still a little low and we needed to, it's time to raise them up just a little bit. It's basically to cover expenses, you know, and operating costs.
Okay. County manager, you wanna add anything before I call up the public for the rebuttal?
Yes, just, just a quick summary. The, the increase in the billing cycle from 24 to $29 and also the slight increase for each additional thousand from 3 to 5 is to take care of an aging system that has a lot of repair work that needs to be done. There are also several other fee increases and these are basically inflationary. We, we are actually, what we are paying for valves, water covers and so forth, these, these increases are just for us to actually recoup the actual cost that the county is paying for those materials. And the, the last item, uh, that's under consideration under this proposed change is to create a security deposit fee, that the system had been experiencing problems with last bills not being paid and it is hoped that, uh, the use of a security deposit, uh, well, will help, will help, uh, negate that problem.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Would you stay close to the, to the podium? Just sit right in front because we're gonna call, ask the public.
I, I have one question, I just realized, um, clarification, I'm sorry. My brain, when you hear things, sometimes it processes differently than reading them. Um, but I just want a clarification for when we're going forward to make sure it's written properly. Um, we're hearing the $17 per month increase, but then for a bi-monthly, it's saying $29. So if it's a $5 increase, is it gonna be $14.50 monthly or is it gonna be $17 monthly, which makes it a $34 bi-monthly base charge?
It'll be, it, it'll be a $5 increase per month. It'll go from 12 to $17. So only two months.
So it'll be a $34 bi-monthly, not $29.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted that clarified for purposes.
Okay. Have a seat in, uh, in the audience, please. Are there any citizens who, both the public would like to come up and, and, uh, speak to, uh, the proposed rate increase for water and fees?
I have a concern.
Come to the podium.
I'm not, I think wrong with that someone. All right. Uh, are you saying, sir, that, uh, the base rate right now for extra gallons?
Turn, turn, turn.
Perhaps?
Speak to the microphone.
It's like $24?
Yes, currently, base rate for, for two months.
For two months. And so you're saying that that would be a $10 increase in two months from $24 to $34?
Correct.
That's a heck of a lot. I mean, I can understand $5, but $10 is a burden, I think. I, I understand, I know everything is going up and everything, you know, and I understand that, but, but, you know, the average citizen of this county, uh, is getting older and there're not a lot of people working outside of the area other than the shipyards. But that's a tremendous thrust on somebody to go from five to, from, from, from a point to $10 in two months and everything else creeping up with them. Is there anything now, the legislation, sir, Mr. Ward, uh, you talk about infrastructure, right? So I'm, I'm, I'm speaking of, when you're speaking about infrastructure, you're not just speaking of transportation, you're speaking of water. Is there anything that your office can do?
Mr. Williams.
What?
Address the board and he'll come back and address your question.
Okay. Was there anything that Mr. Ward probably could do to kind of offset some of that cost through his office that could help us out a little bit? So that, so that wouldn't be a $10 increase, maybe a $5. Do you think that, 'cause we're talking about infrastructure, we're talking about infrastructure, we're not talking just water, but we're talking about conglomerational things, but water is one of those. Because I'm quite sure water would be one of the things that you're looking at that will bring industry here in this county. And it has to be done, uh, you know.
Thank you.
So that's just a concern I have.
We got you. Okay. Is there anyone else with the, come to the, come to the podium?
Good evening, officials, chair, everybody else. I have a question. Um, when was the last time our water has been increased? Like, when did we go from 7 to 12? Anybody know that? I'm just curious.
Oh, hold on. So what, what, I'm, connect to Mr. Craddock.
As far as what I can find, it was sometime after 2007. Exact date, I cannot find.
After 2007. So I'm just trying to look at, like, we haven't had an increase probably in excess of 10 years, which is pretty awesome. And I understand that, um, you know, people, um, everything is going up, that's true. Um, but I'm a, belong to a Baptist church and I always remember my mama saying that, uh, people do what they want to with their money. Okay? They do, and we have to have water. We've talked about our failing system and so, yeah, this is different. Because when we went from 7 to 12, you know, that was an increase and people complained. And so, you know, I, I hate it, you know, that it's gonna make us all kind of restructure, but in excess of 10 years, I kinda get it. So, I just, and I wanted that, I, I was trying to think back because I've been in my house this year, May 18 years, and I was like, I think I've always paid 12, I couldn't remember. And so, yeah, that makes sense. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Come to, we got two people, hold on, Mr. Forsythe, I think you, I think you beat him to the podium.
Sorry. Uh, Dave Forsythe, I just had a couple, 'cause to try and keep us from having an increase again, a couple things. If we had a 30% leakage rate, we're now fixing those, just when they're calculating the necessary revenues needed. Are we calculating this increase based upon getting that leakage down to maybe 10%? Because if you multiply X amount of gallons times a certain rates we're, we're gonna charge and we suddenly drop the volume that we're producing, our expenses could go down some and if somebody's... And if somebody's assuming a rate based upon total volume, we could make some miscalculations and I'd hate to see us go back and want to up the rate again in a year because we fixed our system and we don't have as, perhaps, or maybe the rates can go lower then, but do we need to really charge that amount? That's my question. Can you see where I'm getting at? Just making sure our calculations are correct.
Gentleman in the back?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's Sam Solomon, I reside here in Gatesville. Had several dealings with the water department recently and it's all been good. I've noticed the work they went, in the last four or five months, it's changed. There was one of the guys, I call him Gopher because I see him out digging, getting the meters up. I think his name is Juan, I don't know. It might be the guy that called the one, I don't know. But, and this time of COVID, everything's went crazy. We keep hoping everything's going back to normal, everything's going back to the prices they were. We don't know. But I don't doubt we're going to have to have more money to improve this infrastructure. So I'm thinking maybe the Commissioners might consider giving it a year to come up with a plan to improve this and see how much extra money we're going to have to do something with. You got to have the money to do it. And if we, if at some point the price has dropped in the next year, two years, then maybe they can lower the rate. But I don't doubt at this point that we don't have to budget for more money. Because we all expect when we turn that water on for it to come on. And we all want to see it get improved. Thank you for your time.
No, you have to call.
Commissioners, I may know what you said. I fail to remember why you went to about every two months.
Oh.
Okay. And there is, there, I agree with Mr. Williams, that there are people, as in myself, on fixed incomes, but I've never stopped paying you or the county about every month. I still pay you every month regardless of what you said. And I really am encouraged that you're going to fix the meters because they are running out of compliance, if there ever was a compliance. But is there a part where you would consider changing to going back to monthly? And now let me, let me remember. Is that for your economical basis or our economical basis? As far as billing us? You save money by billing us by monthly, okay? Right? I already said what I had to say.
Mr. Arnold, would you come back to the podium? Ms. County Manager, I heard you, I saw you down at having counsel with the attorney. So we've heard from, we've heard the presentation, we've heard the comments from those who wanted to come to the podium, now it's time for the, let me see.
Time to close the public here. Have all people spoke? Close the public here.
If there's nobody that's going to speak, I'm going to close, I'm asked for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing is closed. Now we get to discussions as far as some of the questions, some of the concerns. Do you want Brad to go?
I just would like to address to the board that this was duly advertised for a public hearing this meeting, and I bring to the attention of the board that the content of that public hearing notice states, and I quote, "Proposed changes include the current base water rate fee minimum from $24," that's a for a two-month period, "to a proposed amount of $29." So you're looking that for each billing cycle, it would be going up $5 in that billing. So, and I know there may have been a little bit of confusion because we did go from a one month to a two month, but as this is written, the maximum under this public hearing, because you cannot adopt a fee that was higher than advertised. And what was advertised was an increase in the current base water rate, which is a two-month billing cycle from $24 to $29. Now the remainder of it, for each additional thousand gallons, yes, it'll be $3, it'll increase from $3 to $5.
Okay.
And from what I can determine, all other information has been properly advertised.
There will be a monthly increase of $2.50.
What was advertised, was that, yes, sir?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it? Now, that's clear. Is there any other comments to some of the questions that we had or concerns from the public that you would like to speak to? Anyone here we're going to discuss it amongst ourselves about the reason for even raising the water rates? We have applied for grants to help us with our infrastructure needs. Mr. Rodney Tark in Green Engineering. We're not sure we're going to get that, we don't know what they're going to fund us, we just don't. We hope that we are successful in everything we submitted, but we're looking to see what in about 40, 30, 35, 40 days, what we will be granted, awarded. One of the reasons that, two reasons. One, the water rate is too low, you know, paying $12 for years. Number two, we have to build up the enterprise fund. This is a business. Three, we have to show the EQ that we are serious about maintaining what we repair. Okay? We need to put money back in that enterprise fund. If I'm misspeaking, somebody tell me. Y'all saw, everybody saw that presentation that Mr. Tark shared a couple of months ago. So to keep it as it is, it's not putting money back, we're still going to be spending money because of inflation, because of cost of labor, because of cost of repairs, because of cost of supplies, all of that. So as we speak, and somebody correct me, we're not going to put back the requisite or even a significant amount of money in that enterprise fund so that our applications will look favorable to the state. Now, I heard about, can we do it later? I heard about the meters. There is a plan to replace those meters as soon as possible. I think there's a proposal that you and the county manager have been looking at to replace them because we know they're old, they're not calibrated, they're probably not reading accurately. That's going to help with the water that you use too, if you get it right. That said, we're going to replace the meters, but we still have to wait the water rate. And then in the summer, I heard someone say about, you know, what about if we find that you're almost like guessing? But we have some data here that he shared, and maybe it's not clear, but we can share that with you too. But during the summer, we are going to have a firm to come here to do a comprehensive study of the water rate. We cannot get here now because we're on a list, but they will be here hopefully in the summer to do a comprehensive review of the water rate and make a recommendation. That recommendation, we don't know what it's going to be. It may be higher than what we're saying now, it may be lower than what we're saying now, but we have to have that. But in the meantime, we're trying to show or demonstrate, not show, demonstrate that Gates County is serious about our infrastructure and maintaining what we're getting ready to fix. You know, if we get the grant and we fix the infrastructure, we have to maintain it, we have to sustain it. So we need to show that because we are so far behind and our system was so, you did a good job, you're still doing a good job, have more work to do. But you saw the presentation from the engineering firm, the Commissioners heard it, asked questions, we understand it. Is there anything else from the Commissioners for Mr. Arnold or for the county manager? As we begin to discuss, because now I'm going to call on you, if you have other information or any questions or comments you want to make, we're going to start the conversation in earnest and we have Mr. Arnold, we have the county manager that's been working with this on a daily basis. Commissioner Truman.
I mean, I could say, yeah, I definitely, especially per that, like I've mentioned, I was a fan of that presentation, agree with the increase. The only question I had raised, I just wanted to make sure that it was clarified because I do understand either way, the $5, and I can see where that was an easy mistake to put on paper with going from the one to two-month billing cycles. But, I mean, yeah, I definitely agree with the increase and the purpose of it for what it is and what the presentation had displayed. And again, I encourage anyone, it is still online, if you did not see that presentation, if you watch it, it is very clear and it does show a lot of good information from the research that they have done and provided. So I do encourage you to watch it if you have not.
Commissioner Hoffler.
Sustainability is very important. When we talk to the people on the state level, when we saw the presentation or attended with Mr. Tark, if we, the state is not going to give us money if we cannot make the ends meet, if we are collecting less money than it's costing us to produce. We've got to have it so that it pays for itself. It is our enterprise zone. This water system should not get any additional tiny money, it should be financed by the people who use the water. Me, you and I use water, we pay for it. It's not subsidized by the county, it has to stand alone. And we have to charge enough to meet our obligations, plus to put some in a rainy day fund because there could be a collapse of a tower or something so that we would have money to fix it.
Commissioner Craddock.
Was this sunflower in the package?
Yes. We got it.
I mean, did everybody?
We hear that.
The sunflowers.
I don't think they saw it.
All right. I want to read a statement that explains a lot. Gates County Water Plant produced 329,171 gallons of water in 2022. 156,112 gallons was built, with a total revenue of $1,022,872.95. Total number of gallons produced minus the total build was 173,059,000 gallons. This converts to a 52% loss in water. So that touches on what Mr. Forsythe was talking about. And if I'm not mistaken, you said to a treated gallon of water is around $0.35? $0.30 a gallon, still. That's a lot of savings in itself in kilometers.
Right.
Plus a 52% water loss, I believe a little bit of research was done, a bad water system is around 30% loss, good water system around 10, somewhere along that range.
A good water system, you're looking at five or less, medium, maybe five to 15. 15.
So we're gone. We're gone. I mean, it explains, we've got to do it, it's a business, it's got to sustain itself, it's got to pay for itself. It does not get any other government funding. And if you see the enterprise fund, it's on a downhill slope and we can't have that. We can't have it. We cannot upgrade the system, we don't have the money we need to do it with. We've reached out to other entities trying to get grants to help offset some of the costs. And who knows, one day maybe we will be able to load them back to $12. But as of right now, I don't see how we can sustain the water department without raising the rates.
Do you mind if I give?
Go ahead.
A few surrounding county rates? Now, I'm not saying this to justify rates at all, but. $24. 1,000. It's $30. I'm not trying to, we don't need to charge, but we just, we need to come up a little bit.
Commissioner Roundtree?
Yes, the issue is stewardship and sustainability. Stewardship, we must be accountable for the system that we have in place, we must maintain it. That's going to be a cost. No one likes costs, a cost is necessary in order to have the infrastructure in place that we need. Sustainability is very important. We must be able to sustain our enterprise fund. If not, it would bankrupt itself. We do not want to continue to be on the stress list. We must take the necessary actions to ensure that we have the water system in place for our citizens. Sometimes we don't like to take medicine, but it's necessary for a cure. Stewardship and sustainability.
Okay, we've heard the presentation, the citizens have had a chance to with their comments. Now I need a motion from the board.
Madam Chair, seeing how this is adoption of a fee and there were quite a few in here, this really should be styled as an ordinance.
Okay.
And not knowing how the board may do this, now that I think, if I'm correct, that the board is ready to adopt this as has been presented and advertised, so now the clerk can go ahead and prepare an appropriate ordinance. One other issue with this is going to be the effective date. It would be good that the effective date, since the billing cycle begins at the first of the month, to have an effective date at the first of the month, so you're not in a situation where you're trying to figure out how much to pay for part of the billing cycle and the rest. So I would recommend that this come back to the board and styled as an ordinance with an effective date of either April or March 1st.
Mr. Arnold?
I recommend April 1st.
April 1st? Is the effective date?
There's double, I mean, there's two.
No, no, no.
January, February.
Effective date, April 1st, 2023, is going to be in the style of an ordinance.
Correct.
Got you. Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have all the information you need?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Moving on to old business. Item A is the Rosenwall School update by the Commissioners. I'm tired, y'all.
A motion on what, Madam Clerk?
The decision with the fees.
The fees, the final decision with that will be with the adoption of the ordinance.
I thought it was adoption of the ordinance.
With the adoption of the ordinance. But we have direction now, instruction from the board. So the final action will be the adoption of the ordinance.
So we're fine?
Yes.
I thought we were.
Okay.
Y'all confusing me now. Come on. Okay. Item A is the Rosenwall School update. We received the notice, I mean, the assessment from Mr. Thomas, Reed Thomas?
Reed Thomas.
I think it's in here somewhere in your packet. It's in here and that was sent out over a month ago, I believe. Madam Clerk, you remember submitting this to all the parties and it's in the packet. Hope you had time to read it. Mr. The report, the assessment speaks on future renovations of the Rosenwall School. It does not speak to the assessment of safety and security that was presented. On Friday, Commissioner Craddock and myself went out to tour again the Medical Center complex because he had not seen it or had not visited there in many years. Mr. Craddock, Commissioner Craddock tabled during the last meeting on the Rosenwall School, he tabled the motion. the Rosenwall School, he tabled the motions, or tabled a resolution on the, of the motions, because we had not received the, um, assessment of Mr. Reed Thomas. And we received that last month, now we bring it back again, and he is going to speak to that as we move forward.
Alright, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, so on, on this subject matter, we did, uh, had the opportunity last Friday to go out and look at the facility. Uh, it'd been many, many years since I had, um, stepped a foot in that building. Uh, I was actually pleasantly surprised at the condition of the building. Uh, it looked a lot worse on the outside than it did from the inside. I was, um, I do a lot of facility work, maintenance and facility preservation with my job at International Paper. Uh, you know, it's, it's one of those things, a good thorough cleaning, uh, minimal construction. I mean, there, there would have to be some changes if we, the board decided to do this right. Um, had a little bit of a hard time with it, so why, why do we want to move from a perfectly good building to another building? Um, so as I was walking through the other day, I was making a list of things that I just saw, right off Jump Street, uh, outdoor lighting, which, uh, would need to be replaced, fresh coat of paint in certain areas, removal of all the metal equipment that's in the, the facility, pressure washing sidewalks, maybe, uh, had to install a couple partition walls to separate, because Jim is, Jim's, I'm saying that right?
Yeah, you said it right.
Uh, Jim's is currently using it as a food storage facility, and that where they, uh, service our community. Uh, some bathrooms need to be updated. Uh, I believe there's six or seven of them in there, if I counted right. So I believe some of them probably could, uh, be taken out of service. So what I, what I'm trying to look at, uh, a job like this, is, I guess I would call it, uh, at work, I do pros and cons, uh, just to help me rationalize everything, think everything, I make sure I'm making the right decision. So, uh, started with the pros, and what I could come up with was, uh, more centralized location than the center of the county. Um, it would probably be easier loading and unloading, uh, voting machines, because it's on the same surface, going down the ramp, instead of going down a ramp, uh, which comes into a safety aspect, somebody pulling a bat. It's more handicap accessible due to not having ramps. Uh, it's located near to the, near the high school. I was sitting back, thought about that this afternoon, jotted it down, uh, probably a lot of our register, our new register, come from the high school. They're turning eighteen while they're in high school. Uh, big lobby, waiting area, glassed off cubicles, secretary, for the secretary or assistant, a door that separates the lobby from office spaces, file storage closets, rooms for storage voting machines, whatever. Uh, so I get to my cons. Uh, not like, it's not located near any other government buildings, so it's, it's out there by itself. Um, the time and effort that would take to relocate, there's currently no security system, and it's not ready to move in right now. So if the board decided to relocate the election building, or elections board, it wouldn't happen overnight.
Okay, no.
Uh, it would take some time to finish an iron eye, all the details. Um, we would include the board, collaboration, assistance of, if we decide to do this with the facility layout. Um, Jim's will not be going anywhere, so then if y'all, if y'all hear rumors out there, they're keeping Jim's out if we do this right. Uh, we'll go to share. We might have to put up a few partition walls, but the building was much larger than what I was going. So, uh, I mean, that's my thoughts, that's my pros and cons. Uh, that's what I come up with. Uh, so really, now it's up, you know, to the board to discuss and share their, uh, thoughts and concerns, and make this decision.
Can I speak to a couple of points?
I recognize Commissioner Hoffler.
Um, concerning Jim's, Jim's used to share with the election board many years ago. We had, remember the two little rooms, so we have worked together, you know, numerous, uh, for numerous years. And I do believe the health department is, is that state owned? Or county owned?
The health department.
Oh, this right next door, it's located.
But the building's ours.
The building's ours, I think they, don't they pay?
I, I believe it's.
So, I mean, there's a, not any building.
We own that, we own that building.
On that lot, uh, with that. Uh, it certainly gives them more room, uh, and to branch out and to store their equipment, and I'll, and I, I think that it would work. And this year is 2023, and this is a year that we don't have many elections, because it's an odd year. Uh, so I mean, it, we can have time to get it, the, the things that needed to be done, done, because it's not an election this year. If we were going to make a change, you know, we should go ahead and start the process.
Commissioner Truman?
Um, yeah, I have several concerns. Um, with it first is, again, and Commissioner Craddock pointed this out, um, it is a daily operational county office. Um, his pro point, I believe, was, make sure I'm quoting it correctly, but the pro point was that it's more centralized in the county, and mentioning the registered voters being near the high school. Um, maybe more centralized in the county, however, it's more removed from the county offices. Um, there are often times that the director of the Board of Elections is the only person that is on staff in that building. And if she has to step away for any reason, we're now increasing that time away from the office, that I know people are already complaining about when they go and she has to step out for county business. We're increasing that time, we're allowing for more complaints in that area. Registered voting, typically, most people, I believe, and I could be incorrect, register to vote when they change their license. They get their license updated at eighteen. I know when I was eighteen, it meant absolutely nothing to say I was eighteen and it said it on my license, but the first thing I wanted was to update that license. And you have that option to register to vote. I don't feel like it's going to hurt either of those areas. Um, I don't understand why we would move an office that is requesting more security and better lighting to somewhere that is fully removed from other county offices, um, that is an even more desolate area with fewer neighbors. Yes, they do have the one building with the health department there, but how often is the Board of Elections Director and the staff with only a one or two-person team required to be there after hours? I feel like it puts them more at risk when they're leaving. We're removing them farther from the center of the county offices. Um, perhaps not the center of the county, but the center of the county offices. Um, I also think that we greatly need to consider the input from this board of, um, Board of Elections and from the director, as they're the ones that are going to be put in these situations. Um, there were threats, perhaps not directly to our Board of Elections office, but there were threats to many Board of Elections offices throughout the state of North Carolina in this past election. I personally am not comfortable with having a Board of Elections Director, even if it's, if it's just her, or even if she has a couple of others with the staff and the board there with her, having to be in a situation of being there after hours in a more desolate area. Even with lighting, it doesn't seem fair to me. Um, I'll also add, as far as like the Jim's building goes, um, I have toured that building as well, and I could be incorrect, but is not every room, when the food actually comes in, currently in use, with an exception of an office at the front that was hopeful to be at one point an office for Jim's? And as far as the streamline as that goes, like, we, we have, if you look at our county maps report, we have a high number of citizens that are food insecure. Jim's is also an incredible priority that we need to consider here. So those are my primary concerns. I don't know if there are any answers there or not, but I think that we really need to greatly consider the safety of our staff and our employees and our Board of, you know, the Board of Elections staff entirely, and I think that we need to consider Jim's and the fact that we are a food insecure county in some ways, um, a higher percentage than I'd like to see, and that we need to make sure we're catering to those people.
Commissioner Roundtree?
Yes, my concern is stability and consistency. I know the department has been moved several times, and I believe that consistency is very important, um, especially if the building that they're currently in is feasible and functional. Uh, also, I believe that we should consider the costs, uh, versus moving and staying. That should be in consideration. So those are things that I'm concerned about, the move from Rosenthal to the other facility.
I've heard from all the commissioners, and we're going to move on to, in just a minute, we're going to move on to the vote for B and C. When we visited on Friday, Commissioner, and I'm not talking for you, I'm just, we've talked about this. The initial relocation came about because of the safety and security upgrades that was detailed in our report. It would take away the integrity of that Rosenwall School. The medical complex, I call it the Medical Center complex. There are plans to install, to install a security system, RE, what is it, Roelke Electric was out there, with, um.
OEA.
REA. They're installing two pole lights, the LED that lights that whole place up in the front and the back. The rooms are going to be renovated at less cost than what's in this amendment that we're going to get ready to talk about or vote on. It is on a well-traveled road. They have more space than they needed, they have more space than they have now. The safety and security is always number one in everybody's mind, and it will be safe and secure, just like now where they're currently located. If they have to work late during elections, or whatever, uh, the, the daily operations are, there are mechanisms that can be put in place. That building, like, uh, Commissioner Craddock, we talked about how many rooms are in that building, how we're heating and cooling that building, and that's a large building with a lot of rooms. There used to be a dental office. And there are a lot of efficiencies and effectiveness that we can use in that building without renovating that Rosenwall School, and we just talked about the assessment report from Mr. Thomas. Mr. Craddock and I, what he didn't share with you was the fact that we were probably going to, in the future, near future, look at relocating everyone out of that Rosenwall School. And repurpose it as a visitor center. Why are we talking about that? Because we don't have a visitor center. We've been asked about locating a visitor center. It's a Rosenwall School that has memorabilia in it already. It could play right into the African-American Heritage Trail that we're working on, that we got funding for. It could show off that Rosenwall School in its integrity. It's going to be a draw for ecotourism. Now, the Board of Elections has a whole year. We already looked at the cost of preliminary, we know exactly what we need to upgrade, and it's not going to cost thirteen thousand dollars. Some of the work will be done this year. No one said anybody's going to move next week. We didn't, we never put a timetable on relocation. We're not going to move anybody until we get it right, get it appropriate, if we vote to move it. Jim's is going to stay where it is. I heard last night we're going to evict Jim's, we're not going to mess with Jim's. Jim's is a staple in this county, is needed, and it's perfect where it is as far as providing food for the people who are food, uh, challenged. If you've ever been in that medical complex, you will see how many rooms are in there that could be repurposed for office space, and they wouldn't be on top of each other. Mr. Craddock? Now, I'm talking about, if you have A and B, you have to go through B and C.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The, uh, well, one affects the other.
Yes, it does.
That's how I'm looking. So there's, uh, the budget amendment and/or the relocation. If we, if we relocate, relocate the board, we won't need the budget amendment, so we can take care of both of them.
So you want to combine?
Yeah, you don't have to combine, we.
Okay.
But I'm just.
Okay, we discussed it, we're calling for a motion?
I'm a little confused, uh, with A and B. Are you want to vote on one, or the second and second?
No, no, well, A was nothing to vote on.
Well, no.
That's just an update. So B would be the budget amendment. But if we vote on relocation of Board of Elections, and we relocate, we will have to do a budget amendment. I don't know, that's what I was saying.
You understand what he's saying?
Mm-hmm.
You understand, everybody understand what the motion is, make the motion. I'm, I'm asking for a motion. You can, no, anybody can make them, come on.
I fault Craddock.
Go ahead.
Okay. I make a motion, we relocate Board of Elections.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it again.
Second about Craddock, Commissioner Craddock, you have a motion? I see you're writing, you have it.
The motion is to relocate the Board of Elections, and now I just need a.
The second was by Mr. Craddock?
Yes.
Commissioner Craddock, excuse me.
Commissioner Craddock.
The motion was made by Commissioner Hoffler.
If you want to combine the two, you have to identify both of them.
We will not know about it.
Can I ask a question? I, I'm, I'm new to the process here, I just want to.
Wait a minute, hold on, something.
I think what we have is a thing, is a, is a motion simply to relocate.
Okay.
That still, it cannot be left to assumption what, what it may be.
Okay, I make a motion that we relocate the Board of Elections to the, um, Medical Center complex. Is that what it's called?
That's what I call it, I don't know what it's called. Let's do that first. Okay. Alright, so we have, yes, we have a motion and a second to relocate the Board of Elections.
To the Medical Center complex.
Mm-hmm. Are you ready to vote?
For the dental office.
Are you ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand, because y'all are confusing me. All in favor of relocating the Board of Elections to the Medical Center complex, for lack of a better term.
To make sure everything is legal.
Yes.
It has to be seconded, again, because I, we changed the motion.
I'll say it again.
Second by Commissioner Craddock, all in favor, I want them to raise their hand, so we don't get confused again. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay? Oppose, raise your hand. Board Clerk?
These are Truman and Roundtree.
Okay.
The yeses were Hoffler, Craddock, and Riddick.
Mm-hmm.
And the motion passed. They will be relocated to the Medical Center.
The second one, Mr. Craddock, is the, um.
Wait, I mean.
The motion?
No.
Budget amendment.
I make a motion to not go through with the Board of Elections budget amendment resolution.
Do I have a second? You're still writing, everybody's still.
What, okay, if we. What, okay, if we, do we really need to make a...
Yes.
Yes, we do.
We have a second.
Been properly motioned by Commissioner Craddock, second by Commissioner Hoffler, to not approve, I think that's what you said.
Yes.
Not approve the budget amendment as stated on the budget amendment sheet, put it that way.
So pretty much it's denied, budget amendment denied.
Okay.
You may repeat that.
Repeat, repeat what you said so we can vote.
You're saying not to go through with the Board of Elections' budget amendment, pretty much you're saying you're denying the budget amendment.
With deny.
Deny.
Okay. Now I need a raise of hands for votes for yes?
All in favor, raise your hand. Got that?
Nays?
Nays, raise your hand. Okay.
The motion actually passed because we have three to two. The budget amendment has been denied for the Board of Elections.
Okay. Next on the agenda, before we go there, you need to take a five-minute break. We've been here since, some of us been here since two o'clock, so let's take a five-minute break and we come right back.
Like the next one is from last fall. I got to clear it out.
See, some of those were.
Okay, we're back in session. Hopefully, we can get through this. We're not going to rush it because we've got work today. The next item is D, proposed smoking policy. Hold on. Ms. Sheila Hayes could not be here. They presented this last fall, part of their Gates County 2021 Community Health Assessment data. And it indicates that heart disease, cancer, and cerebral vascular disease are the top three leading causes of death among Gates County residents. Furthermore, we know that tobacco use increases one's risk for all three of these diseases. In addition, 22% of Gates County residents smoke as compared to 18% of North Carolina residents. Unfortunately, tobacco users in our community have many barriers that exist to reduce their tobacco use. These barriers include accessibility of tobacco, tobacco use on government grounds, parks, recreation areas, and in public places is legal and unfettered advertising. One evidence-based strategy that local government can implement to improve community health are tobacco-free policies. We recommend that Gates County strengthens their local government policy from the following: current policy, tobacco-free government buildings and vehicles, smoke-free government parks and recreation areas, strengthen policy to include tobacco-free for all grounds owned or leased by Gates County, including the county parks and recreation areas. I'm reading this because Ms. Sheila Hayes, as I said, could not attend, so she sent these notes to me. If you go on the website, you will see our Gates County 2021 Community Health Assessment data. Commissioner's in your packet. I believe, Madam Clerk, they got the proposed changes to our current smoking policy. I think it's in your packet. She mopped it up, helped us out a little bit. I talked with her briefly about this. You can look at it. I do know that the change to policy of everybody has to have a public hearing, I believe, sir.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's a bit of curiosity. What you have is that this is contained in your county code. Therefore, it is not policy, it's regulation.
Okay.
So why it's described as a code is
I don't know.
is a misnomer. I mean, it's a regulation. So any change to this would be an amendment to the county code
Right.
requiring a public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And in short, the request was currently the county code prohibits smoking inside all county buildings.
Right.
It also prohibits smoking on two county properties, or as the ordinance calls it, grounds.
Grounds.
And that's at the Health Department and also at the Department of Social Services. The request that's before you is to make all grounds of the property owned or leased or otherwise tobacco-free, campus-free is a term that is heard a lot, and that's the request. And it's purely at the discretion of the board if it wishes to pursue that, or at least consider it, at public hearing. Just authorizing a public hearing doesn't bind you to approve anything, it just states that you're going to formally consider it.
I did share with Ms. Hayes about the public hearing. I knew that we had to have a public hearing. I'm bringing it forward because this is one of the other items that we had left over from last fall. And so, in a discussion before I ask for a motion, whether we go forward and schedule a public hearing, or... I'm listening. I know we have some smokers. I know we have some smokers, but you know, with our community, you can't, I mean, you could. If you go on the website, our Gates County 2021 Community Health Assessment data is there. And she's just trying to, she works for the Alamo Regional Health Department. And she does a fantastic job. And she did say that if one of the questions or some of the question was, you know, about signage and all of that, they could help us with that if we so choose, if we, you know, decided after public hearing that they would do marketing and help, they would help us do what we need to do. And also, we have a cessation opportunity with our health insurance. I did ask Kristi about that because I know most times when you have like Blue Cross Blue Shield, they have programs for people to cease and desist from smoking, no alcohol abuse, drug abuse, things like that. So if we have it in our offering for our health insurance, that's why I asked, do we have a wellness program? She said, oh, yeah, we have a wellness program. Have a cessation, you know, whatever.
And just so there's no misunderstanding, this would not be specific only to county employees.
No.
This would be specific to anybody.
Yes, everyone.
And just observation on court day, there's a lot of smoking going on in that parking lot.
Well, sir.
It's very similar to school, no smoking. We couldn't smoke on the grains and, you know, at the football games and things like that. I mean, so legally, you shouldn't do it, right?
Um, more discussion before I ask for, you want to go forward, table it? No, we don't want to table it. We are table it before. They want to know what we're going to do as a county as far as ensuring that best we can, build, having all the wellness and... Commissioner Rowntree? I wanted to call y'all out.
Yes, I promote good health and I promote what we're about to vote on because health is very essential in our daily lives. So I'm for it.
Okay, Commissioner Craddock.
Oh, I'm interested to see what the public would have to say.
Okay, let's move forward. Commissioner Hoffler.
Well, I think it's healthy not to smoke. So I think we need to stress health. Certainly, we'll hear from our smokers. We heard it, we did it at school, but we still went ahead and did it. And so I think we have to set it as after while, young.
Such thing as mental health, too.
Commissioner Truman.
I mean, to me, it sounds pretty standard, but a lot of government facilities are doing now. Just focus on health, cessation program is also something of point of interest. So I mean, I think that going into the public hearing and hearing the public's opinion would be ideal.
Okay.
Just a motion would be in order to authorize staff to order the proposed amendment as presented for public hearing by the board at your next regular meeting.
Do we have a motion to move forward and we can word it appropriately?
Yeah.
He's reading this exactly from whatever it is.
I make that motion that we can move forward with the right wording.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will make sure that we get a public hearing scheduled appropriately, move forward. After then, we can hear from the public and then we can discuss and move on. Next, we have, almost there. We just did.
Oh, we have.
Oh, no, no. No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm skipping over some people, I'm sorry.
Mr. Earl Bright is coming up now for broadband update. Mr. Bright was appointed by me, he represented the board on like a broadband action team. Right now, he's a committee of one. He's been working since about three months ago. And his background is steeped, many of you know him, in broadband. I think he was at the beginning of TIE. He's a retired network switching technician from, used to be centrally, now Bright Speed. He has 42 years of telephone communication experience in northeast North Carolina. He was hired by Norfolk and Carolina Telephone back in the day. He's located in Elizabeth City, the local telephone provider for northeast North Carolina and Chesapeake, Virginia. Norfolk and Carolina merged, and then, of course, he was there for that. He's a nationally certified firefighter and a driver pump operator, having served Elizabeth City and Sunbury for a total of 50 years. His career has been in telephone and network technician with centrally, now Bright Speed. He has extensive resume as far as what he, his expertise are. One of the things he may tell you is that I call him a roadrunner. He chases those broadband service providers up and down the road, and he'll stop and talk their language, so they'll tell him their secrets. Then, of course, he phones me and tells me what he is. But anyway, he is the technical expert we have engaged in this county as we move towards selecting a broadband service provider for the great grant. And he's going to give us a short presentation, yet very short, and tell us some things. Then I'm going to follow him with the financing part or the, he's the technical part. I serve as the, making sure that we get what we pay for. And so, Mr. Bright?
Dr. Riddick, board members, thank you for giving me this opportunity to do this for the county. And I will say that it's been a learning experience. The first thing I found out that is, you really need lobbyists because it's evident as we've seen how these awards are being awarded. I kind of thought in the beginning they had to map something, throw darts at it, but now I'm getting to decide that it's lobbyists that have this. My first meeting that I attended was in October, and that first part of that was with some of the great grant. And the early winners at that point were Charter, Spectrum, and Bright Speed. That is kind of almost water over the dam, so to speak. But looking at this through Monty River LLC, which we're in a group with Alamo Regional Planning Commission and Roanoke Center. And this group stretches from Warren County to Hyde County, Currituck County, everybody. So there's a big footprint that we're in. And we have found out that the telcos, cable providers, cell providers have lied to the FCC with maps as to what they have presented. So it's been a big part of the last couple of weeks or months with me was looking at maps and making sure that the right speeds and everybody's told the truth, and that amounts to funding on these grants. So that's really important. We have met with, Dr. Riddick, myself, and county manager, met with Roanoke Connect. They had some good information for us, and I'll allude more on that. We have met with Bright Speed. Bright Speed did not have a timeframe other than their two to six years that federal grant money says they have to do it. Last week, we met with Charter. And Charter is two to 10 years with two to six years completing their bill out as what the rules claim. Looking at this in between with our other meeting, Roanoke Connect said, hey, we want to go at this on our own for the time being, and we want to be Gates County's provider for high-speed internet, fiber to the house, fiber to the prim, or whatever you call it. And low and behold, started first of the year, Roanoke Connect is putting fiber up, putting strand up. And if you see somebody walking in your field, your front yard, measuring poles, that's getting ready to bring the fiber to you. They are going to put in about 400 to 700 miles of fiber, they hope, within the next year. And that is faster than what Bright Speed and faster than what Spectrum is doing. This week, Spectrum showed up in the county big time, and they are starting to plow and hang stuff on the poles. When I look at this, I've stopped and talked to all of them. We have compared pricing. Pricing is going to be pretty much the same across the board. One might be higher, one might be cheaper, but it's going to still be affordable. Roanoke Connect is not offering a bunch of packages. They're going to be 100 up, 100 down, which is 100 megs up, 100 megs down. And Roanoke Connect, on their top side will be one gig up, one gig down. Bright Speed has a whole list of different speeds at different prices. Cable TV, Spectrum has different speeds at different prices. So, you know, as it comes in your front door, price them, see who's going to be the best service provider for you. You know, right now, we can't really recommend anybody, but Roanoke Connect's looking pretty good in my neighborhood, I will say that. As we move forward on this, there will come a time that we might have to help out a little bit or support. But they are here. Roanoke Connect is here, Spectrum is here, and I am going around, following them and making sure they're following the rules they're supposed to be following. And we had a big presentation from Charter that every one of our trucks and cars that are doing work will have a placard on there saying they're Charter Communications. I found 22 today in one placard out of 22. So they're not listing Roanoke Connect. All their contractors do have signage on their vehicles saying they're Roanoke Connect. The folks you walk in with the measuring sticks, you see looking in on the right of ways, they have Roanoke Connect on theirs. Roanoke Connect will be heading toward Hobbsville, Sunbury, Core Peak in the next few weeks as soon as they get some issues worked out with Dominion Power about hanging in on their poles. But Gates County, we are going to finally have good, high-speed service here in the future. So that's the short abbreviated version, but we are going to meetings, we're talking, and we're going to farewell, I think. If there's anything a little bit I can answer, I will, but I don't want to get too technical, too long-winded. My notes are a little bit long.
I will say that, before you jump in and ask some questions, that the financing part that I'm trying to oversee has to do with offer funds. And someone mentioned that the other day. The offer funds are still where they're still in debate. I call it debate. We have not spent one dime. You heard the auditor say that, we have not. And one of the reasons or one of the factors, I'm waiting for the contract. We had a meeting yesterday with broadband, and they are supposed to release the draft contract to all the counties in the state of North Carolina that don't have those contracts. It's like an agreement coming down from BIO to North Carolina Department of Division of Internet Technology, and then they're going to vet them, they'll send them to the counties, saying this is the person that won, was awarded the great grant, and this is your match. Well, we did not get the person we thought we were going to get. And so, as I sit and wait for that contract, one of the things I'm going to say is, we didn't get the awarded by who we chose, so we don't owe a match. That's our position in Gates County. I've said it and said it. I'm waiting to see the contract, see what it looks like, what's on it, and then I will be able to go back to Division of Internet Technology and see what we can get done for Gates County. But that money is still sitting there. You heard him say that it's going to be a cost later on. There's another round of funding that's coming called CAB. We'll talk about that later. I don't want to belabor the point. But this is a multi-year. But the offer money has to be in convert by 2024, and it has to be spent by 2026. So they have to, you know, speed it up if they're going to, if we're going to use offer money, and they want to get part of that. So that's what we're waiting for in Gates County, and all of some of the other counties have not gotten their contracts. And we checked on that yesterday in a meeting that I was in. There will be a meeting in Raleigh on the 30th, and I will be there in person. It's a Zoom meeting, but I'm not Zooming this time. I want to be there so I can, I can talk to people and try to get some more clarity about what's going on. We cannot, we should not tell the citizens who to choose as far as our broadband service providers. You have three in the county right now. Some people have satellites. We don't do satellite. They don't fund us for satellite. They're not going to fund you for satellites. They don't recognize them. So you choose the provider that best suits your needs and accessibility and the cost and what you require. You heard Earl say we have Roanoke Connect, we have Bright Speed, and we have Charter, I mean Spectrum. So those are three you choose, and they're all over everywhere. Please be careful. We have many contractors in this county. Dominion Power is in the county. They're implementing their strategic plan and burying some of the electric lines, you know, under the ground. Please be careful because they're everywhere. And I'm just going to say, I'm glad that hunting season is over because between them and the hunters, we had a mess as far as all these people running around counties. But I thank Earl for being the technical person. I don't have to worry about the technical piece. He's got that, and he's actually out on the ground. Mr. Craddock is going to take over in a few months from me. I'm going to shift it over. I'll still be involved, but I need, you've heard me say that he's happy he's going to help us. And also, you're going to hear about a committee of citizens that's going to be working with Mr. Bright. He needs some help as far as from the fire, he needs to know what the fire chiefs need. He needs to know what the first responders need, EMS, EMT, the churches, the businesses, all of us need, the school system, local government. So it's going to be broadband-based committee of representation so that we make sure that we're getting what we pay for, what the grant money. In years past, we didn't get what we paid for. But now, we're trying to make sure that with the process they got in place, that we're watching them, holding them accountable. It's called accountability, and that's what we're trying to do. So if you have questions, go to their websites, they're on the website, and their marketing's strong now, all three. And you're going to hear from them calling you or stopping by your house. Make sure they got a badge on and trying to offer you, you know, whatever it is you need so you can adopt them. So we thank Earl. Do you have any questions for Mr. Bright? I call it an Earl. I'll tell you a funny story about Earl. They were in front of my house, and they didn't have a placard, oh, no, a justification on their truck, and they were out there flagging. So I went over there and asked who the word. They wouldn't tell me. I didn't even go back to that house and call Earl. I said, Earl, somebody's in front of my house. I want what he did. But he told me, oh, I know who it was. So he's like a spy.
Sometimes it helps when you can speak your language.
You speak their language. I didn't speak, I didn't want to know who the word. But thank you for your assistance on behalf of the board because you're going to make some recommendations to us as far as going up, going forward, and not only signing that contract, but also holding them accountable.
The one thing that Dr. Riddick alluded to was they have, through the time, they realized they had made some mistakes in wireless internet is not going to be funded at all. And the only place it's going to get anything different is going to probably be for Quinones County and maybe Hyde County. I forget the name of the company now, I've got it, but they are a fixed-based internet provider. But this is a one-time shot, and from that point on, they're only going to fund fiber to your house.
They will not. If you don't get in now, and the money runs out, it's out. And they'll still run it, but it's going to cost you more. It's like, if you get on board now, you got people down your road, you know, get on board if that's what you want. But if you wait, and then all of a sudden, you decide, well, I want them five years, and it's going to cost you more, they got to come back and run that.
You need to sign up now while it's going to be cheaper, maybe no connection fees, we don't know, but sign up. Pick who you think you might want and go for it.
And call them.
Call them.
I've had several of the people in my community that's gotten, I mean, Roanoke Connect has contacted them, and they are interested. Should they go pre-registered?
Yes.
Yes, please.
They started taking restoration this week.
Yep.
So even from non-EMC members. So if you're anywhere, they will, they will take your information.
Mm-hmm. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Moving right along to new committee members update. I just want to share with you quickly that the application for appointments to boards, commissions, and committees has been revised. I've asked the clerk to do that because it's an old application process, not process, but the form itself. So it's been revised, and it incorporates the three new committees that we implemented last month during our organization meeting. The new ones are Gates County Opiate Prevention and Intervention Advisor Committee by Commissioner Truman, Tourism Advisory Board, Commissioner Hoffler, and the Broadband Action Team Committee by Commissioner Craddock and myself right now. So those applications will be vetted with the assistance, especially broadband assistance of Mr. Earl Bright. Additionally, a short resume is strongly suggested as an attachment. While you need to look at the experience of some of the positions that we are asking people to serve in or commit it, you know, and I'm going to say this, and I mean it in all honesty, you know, especially broadband, we need a broad base of personnel, positions on that, and opiate, too, as far as, you know, making sure the first responders, the EMS, the EMT, the medical, you know, all of that. And I will send out a short synopsis to each one of the liaisons, that's what I'm calling them, on the board, as far as the personnel that I've seen in other documentation to help them out a little bit. Look at your resources online, especially opiate, a lot of best practices and resources there. Start doing that. I need a short mission statement so that when they call their office, they'll know what they're signing up for, what are we going to be doing on these committees? What do you, you know, just something short to start until we can get the committee members assigned, then you sit with them and organize yourselves. The opiate has money behind it. We need to make sure that we start that as soon as possible so that we, it's going to take a while to get ourselves together to access that money. So that's some funding that's coming down. That Kirk is also going to provide a chart to the commissioners containing all the committee members and their term of service. Some people may be rotating off or have to rotate off, so we need to know that so that before it happens. And then we can start looking at and say, okay, what do we do? And then we sit as a board and assign these term limits, when they term themselves. She's working on that as well. That's all I have for that. Now we're down to what Summit? Wait a minute. Oh, no.
Park.
Oh. Surplus boat. Mr. Craddock.
If I can have permission from the board, I'll get with Mr. Sample and run an idea by.
Get in the mic. I see, I see, I see Warren looking at you.
If I can get permission from the board, I'll get with Mr. Sample myself and run a idea I had by the boat, and there's going to be no action needed. I hadn't had a chance to get with him this week, just to speak to him, so.
Okay, he hasn't had, I see Mr. Sample back there. He wants to discuss with you a new idea he has about the boat. I'm calling it the boat. And when he asked me, we talked about it before, he said, I got an idea. I said, you need to talk to Mr. Sample. Well, that didn't happen.
Yeah, didn't happen.
He was, he's in Franklin.
I failed.
He failed, he failed the first task. So he's going to get with you, and we're going to resolve this, whatever that call that boat is. Once and for all, I did say to him, we need to resolve that boat. I know you're cleaning up at the EOC property, I know that, but we all know that, and we'll move forward. So you want to table that?
We'll table it.
Okay, he wants to table, what do I?
I make a motion we table that concerning the boat and trailer until the February meeting.
Second.
Our motion is second to table this until the February meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Moving right along. New business, CDBG resolution authorizing signature, county manager.
Yes, Madam Chair, basically, a bit of housekeeping with the 2018 CDBG grant. They do require four signatures because many of the documents do require multiple signatures. Two of them are by position, and other two were from the board. The one, a former board member, Commissioner Owens, he was one of the signators, and that's why this resolution is necessary. And in this resolution, it states that it will still continue to be county manager, finance officer, the commission chairman, Dr. Riddick, or Commissioner Jonathan Craddock. And then, Mr. Craddock or any other board member, if there's any alternatives, and then each of us will sign new signatory cards. But this requires action for the administration, the continued administration of this grant.
Okay, I'm reading that to approve, the board action required is to approve authorization of two individuals to sign the requisition for funds for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Contingency Capacity Build and CB Grant. Is there any discussion? Are you ready to, the motion? I just read it, we're going to make this right in your packet.
Right. So moved. The board action required as mentioned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Properly moved in second, that we approve authorization of two individuals to sign the requisition for funds for the Community Development Block Grant, Contingency Capacity Build and CB Grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Proposed agreement for service for Summit Design and Engineering Services?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. What you have before you is a proposal that I solicited from Summit Design and Engineering. The school system, and this revolves around the community center, which I think you all know, has some very severe problems. center, which I think you all know, has some very severe problems in terms of water infiltration, not just through the roof, but through the walls, windows, just about everywhere. You know, I tried unsuccessfully to get the engineering firm that the school had used a number of years ago, that did an assessment of the building. So I moved on and discussed this with Summit. This is work that they do on a very regular basis in terms of renovation and re-adaptation reuse. So this is, as they put it, right up, right up their alley. This, this proposal would authorize them to move forward with a new evaluation of the building. And this would be a more detailed evaluation than what was done by the school system, which I think, if, we all know it's gonna be a significant amount of money if we need to do repairs to the building. I think it's, it's worth this board spending a little extra money to, to make sure that we're taking all corrective actions, so we can fix that building, put it behind us, and move on to other things. I also would recommend that Summit be selected, and there'll be a price to be determined to, to serve as a project engineer. We have one grant that is specific to use on the community center, an amount of $250,000. We do have another $250,000 grant, basically from the same agency with the state, which the board has indicated, not committed, but indicated, that they think that they would like to use also on that building, because it could be rather significant. Both of those grants were at a point that the grant agencies are, they have contacted me now on two occasions. We need to start moving on this, on this building, and I strongly suggest and recommend to the board that they accept this proposal from, from Summit, and they will then style it as a contract that would be brought back to this board for final action. And not only would they do the assessment, but there needs to be very detailed design, engineering design specifications have to be prepared for the bidding. They would prepare those. They would also help us assess and review bids that are received, qualifications of contractors, for all intent and purposes. They would be the project engineer for, for this thing, from cradle to grave.
Okay. We toured the building again today with represent, I mean, former Senator Steinberg. We wanted him to see that, so we can ask him to help us with further funding. The money he, the appropriations that the county manager just mentioned were appropriations. We have to spend the money they're calling, because that's last year's money, and they're in fiscal year 2023. I did ask the county manager, was it appropriate to use part of that money for the cost of, you see the cost on the last page, to pay for this, as far as capital outlay? So.
Yeah, I, I have not been able to catch up with Ms. Hunter on that. But, you know, that, that's a cause that the county's gonna incur. I'm hoping that it will, you know, that will be a, similar to how grants will allow money for administration.
Yes.
Yeah, that's basically the argument I'm gonna pitch, that, you know, I consider is very much part of an administration, because they are gonna be helping us in administering this grant, with, you know, providing expertise that we need to do this, to do this job.
And also, this, this funding was for the roof. The roof has to be replaced on that community center. And when we did the initial, when they did initial assessment, I think it was over $300,000. We know it's gonna be more than that now.
Yeah.
With the, you know, we know that.
Yes. The, the two grants may just pay for the roof. There are, there are different alternatives for correction of the water infiltration from the brick. And so that will be coming to the board for, for a final, for a final decision after they've done the assessment. One of the things they're doing, that, that building has a brick veneer, but then it's a cinder block wall on the inside. They're gonna go a little bit more in-depth in taking out some sections of brick, peeling the cap back apart, to see exactly what's going on in between there. They, they know there's water. We wanna make sure, is it only water that's in there? So if there's any type of remediation, that that can be taken care of at that, at this time, too.
So they'll tell us what we need, the fixed version?
Oh, yeah. The thing of it now is that the appropriation, OSBM, I think it is, they are on us to spend that. We have to get this money spent.
We, we have to declare the project and scope for, and we're doing that.
We have to have it, mm-hmm. And so that's what's on for your consideration.
Madam Chair, I will make the motion to move forward with Summit.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, second.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Craddock and seconded by Commissioner Roundtree, that we move forward with the recommendation of the county manager. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? So move. Let's move. Just about there, people, just hold on. A proposal to amend the Economic Development Commission. The attorney had to leave, but I've been talking with him. The Economic Development Commission is composed of just the commissioners. I wanna propose, and we can, you know, talk briefly, of amending that commission to include, instead of the commissioners, have it composed of appropriate citizens. Who I'm talking about. Economic development is so specialized. I don't see anybody sitting up here can do it. I talked to the county attorney briefly, because I found some, some information about, he's the one that did the charter. He's the one that did the initial, whatever they did back in, what I found was 2018, 2019, and something prior. And I should've bought a hand some of the papers. But I did talk to our county attorney, Mr. Gogel, and he's looking into it. So I'm just bringing it up for consideration. When he comes back, he says, "Yes, we can, we can do that." And the reason I, I'm gonna propose that is just what I said. That commission right now, for Economic Development Commission, is just the, the composed of the commissioners. That's its only. And I think we need to broaden it out and include, include, could be somebody from the chamber, somebody from small business, somebody a business owner, somebody that owns a company, somebody, a citizen that's had that background in it. And then they bring us recommendations. You know, they don't have any thought of spending any money or making any deals with anybody. But at least, we will have input from the county, a broad-based input from the county citizens in economic development, while we're moving step by step toward trying to figure out what we need to do in the county. So I'm asking, do you want your chair to move forward with the county attorney, looking at that, just look and see, and bring something back in 30 days or within next month? Because right now, it's just us. That's how, that's how it was put together.
Do we need a motion, or can we just do it?
I would like a motion. That way, I lock y'all in.
Lock you. And when you talk about your number, how many people are you?
I don't know. We can, we can, you know, we just need to let the, can we do it? I know we can. I just need to, the permission to, to go forward. I didn't wanna just keep talking. I just saw it. I said, no, just, just, I think we've met one time since I've been on the board.
So we'll make a motion to-
It's a little interesting, because it's actually an advisory body, so it's you advising you.
Yeah.
So, so make a motion for the board chair to further explore the options of the Economic Development Commission.
Membership comp-
Membership, membership composition.
Membership composition.
I'll second that.
It's been properly motioned and seconded, seconded by, motioned by Commissioner Truman, seconded by Commissioner Craddock, to move forward with looking at the composition of the Economic Development Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. The LPGC landfill update, Commissioner Linda Hoffler.
Okay. I've been on that committee for several years now, and Dr. Riddick has asked me to bring you up to date on a couple of issues. As you all know, the price of gasoline and diesel has gone up. Well, we signed a contract in 2010 with a fuel surcharge. We renewed that contract in 2015, never having to use that. Here it is in 2022. It has hit us. And so the fuel surcharge fee is based upon, of course, the United States Department of Energy. I won't go into how they-
Please don't.
-do that. But as of October 10th, 2022, the fuel surcharge for Gates County's portion of it was $40,444. And we have, we haven't, and we, and there'll be more money before the end of the year, or we've already ended the year. We are looking at alternatives. The contract is up again in the near future, but we're looking at alternatives to readjust that fuel surcharge layer. But we have a contract, we've got to pay it. So that is that.
What's the due date?
What?
When do we have to pay it?
We've already paid the first part of it.
First part?
Mm-hmm. But we'll have projects continue to pay some of it in 2023, too.
Okay.
Because I don't think it's gonna fall below $3. What is fuel, nine? Diesel fuel?
I was looking at that report today, and it was.
Commissioner Craddock also was recently appointed to that committee.
You walked into a buzzsaw. But anyway, also, the rumor mill is very active in our county, that community members are being misinformed or misled about recycling. At some places, it has been said that recycling from our centers is just throwing it in the garbage. That is not true. We recycle for many reasons. It is good for the environment, is the right thing to do for our community and society. It's good for the economy, because it does create jobs and provide resources, and it saves the county money. And just to prove it, when we, about this recycling idea here, a, if we take a load of just regular trash, it costs us $85 for a load. Yard waste and concrete, if we do that, is $58 to the transfer station. And if we process our recycling, if we just take out the paper and the plastic and glass, it's $28 a trip. So, you know, we're saving about $60 if we would just recycle. And unfortunately, of the three counties represented in the PGC, Gates County has the lowest recycling rate. And so we really do need, it does save the county money if we recycle. And it's not, just buy yourself a box, put your paper products in it, and carry them to the, to the convenience site. Or the glass bottles, we get 20, I forgot, we have, we, they, we sell the glass, and, but it is, it would really be helpful. And that is something that we need to continue to do. Another thing is, the transfer center , Dianette Belvedere, it has to be inspected. Our inspections have gone very well, but in the last inspection, the gentleman said that we have some potential problems because of the age of the concrete. It is beginning to crack, and that is not good for the pit wall. And so that, in the near future, we're gonna have to do some major repairs to that. And also to a tank cap needs repairing. And so there is some, there is some work to be done to keep, there's some work to be done to the concrete. If you go to the transfer center, there's a hill that goes straight up, it's paved in concrete, there's iron reinforcement. When that concrete breaks, the integrity of that metal can be compromised. So we're gonna have to have some major renovations there, you know, and we're gonna have to have that done by 2025. But we're in the process of getting contracts and all at this particular time. And of course, you know, we are, we have that in the budget, and they are very good about, hopefully have enough in the budget to do that. And finally, a good piece of news, we do get reimbursement for tires in our county. Not a lot, but every $500 you get is very important. So, you know, make sure you do, we do recycle tires as well. And we are very fortunate in that we get money. I want to encourage our representatives, and I should've said this when they were here, the state used to give more money for recycling, especially tires and things like that, and they have cut back in recent years. We need to get them back and setting aside money for that, because they fill up landfills very fast. And if they encourage it, to get the tires and do something else with them. You know, you can braid them, cut them up and do things with them. So we need to get on the state to give us more money to encourage us to recycle. Okay. If you have any questions, please ask me about that, about the PGC. And folks, the attendants are trying to do the best job they can. Certainly sometimes situations change, rules change. But if you don't know where something goes, just ask them, and they can tell you which container to put it in. Because contaminated containers is somewhat of a problem as well.
Thank you very much for that enlightening report. And keep us informed about what we may be expecting later this year or next year. And Commissioner Craddock, that's why I helped put you on that committee, to help out with keeping up with-
Trash.
Trash.
And I will say, and I hate to say this, Hoffler, I think, has the lowest recycling of any of the four stations. And that bothers me, since I live in, I mean, that's where I take my trash. And I do recycle.
Next on the agenda is School Resource Officer salary increase. Sheriff Rick Campbell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll be very sure. The school board recently received an additional $20,000 for SRO, which would raise their salary to an even $40,000. The, it equates that to roughly $44,000 per SRO. So I'm, I'm asking for 40, $20,000 increase.
And you only have two, correct? Are they, where are they, what schools do they serve?
We have two. We have one that works three elementary schools, and the other one is back and forth, mostly at the middle school.
Okay, okay.
At the middle school.
So the middle school and the elementary school?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just curious, I, I've been watching, everybody's watching the violence in schools, especially now, elementary schools now. Are there any plans for additional, in the future, trying to get funding for additional SROs, especially in the high school? I don't think the high school is covered. I've heard that it's, it's not covered.
I will swear an individual in Monday that will be going to the high school.
Okay, okay, good. Good, good, good. That makes me feel better.
He'll have, he'll have to go through SRO training school before he's actually, actually goes in at that position. That's a 40-hour school. I can't get him in there until this summer, but at the start of school in the fall, in August, that will be where he will be located.
And I saw there was a metal detector at that high school.
Yes, ma'am. They, they've actually gotten a couple metal detectors, and they also installed more cameras. So.
Okay.
And also, on a side note, I appreciate the, the school board working with me and giving me this money. They have also doubled, not five, not 10, doubled our rate, our alley rate for ballgame security. They have also doubled, not five, not 10, doubled our rate, our hourly rate for ballgame security and stuff. So I appreciate what they've done for us. We're up there with the, with the larger counties now as far as rate of pay.
Well, I know it's a challenge to cover all the schools and especially high school because we have so many entry points, so many doors to, in that building.
It's, yeah, that's a nightmare.
It's a nightmare, I'm sure.
It is. It really is. But anyway, the guys do a great job. Sometimes the middle school is a handful. Actually, we probably have more incidents involving the SRO at the middle school than any other school.
And this comes with $11,000 match, correct?
The total that the county is getting total, it'll be $88,000. And I'm only asking for $2,020 increase.
I got you. Me, me hear you. There a motion on the floor?
Make the motion to approve the increased request of $2,020 for the SRO as per requested by the sheriff.
I'll second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded that we approve the budget amendment for the sheriff office. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is the budget amendment for the utility, Public Utility Director Brad Arnold. That's in your packet as well.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I'm requesting some budget amendment for several different line items that I'm shorting. I wasn't a part of the '22, '23 budget process and it was just, you know, the base minimum put in. So I'm running a little short in a couple of line items. First line item is salaries. That's due to the new position created for administrative assistant. And hired some retiree for a couple of months to help locate water meters so we could read them faster. Initially, I sit down, Kim and myself sit down and we looked over the budget and we thought we were going to have to request funds from the enterprise fund, but it turns out that's not the case. I have enough in my current budget that I can switch them around to different accounts to cover everything to get us through till June. And also, we're currently short one staff member for June, excuse me, not for June, for utility maintenance worker. So we added to six months. I had to let a worker go and we just turned his salaries in and kind of spread it apart. And I wanted to wait till after July to hire. I think, I mean, it's going to be a little tight, but we can get by till the next fiscal year when I happen to hire somebody else. And potentially have to ask for another budget amendment later on in the year. Did you want me to go through each line item?
No.
It's a lot. It's a whole lot.
We read through it.
We read through it. I make a motion that we approve the budget amendment.
A second, yes.
It's properly moved and seconded that we approve the budget amendment as presented by the Director of Public Utilities. All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Thank you, Brad.
Can I just say thank you for that, the redistribution versus the amendment for more? It is appreciated.
Next, we have the budget expectation for fiscal year '23, the commissioners. This, what we can do here is just share a couple of expectations from each of us because it's going to change as we move through that budget, trying to get this budget done. This year's, if we have '23 budget done with the challenges we have. So if you could speak, you know, just briefly about a couple of budget expectations as we prepare the budget, and then we'll circle back around as we move through it.
Madam Chair, my expectations for the departments to prioritize their needs that they need to address.
Speak up.
My expectations is prioritize, is to prioritize the needs of each department. Each department should prioritize their needs in their budget.
Okay. Mr. Craddock?
So I had my first opportunity to sit through the budget session last year. Please, please think about what you need, what you think you might need. Because a month after we pass the budget, I really don't want to see any budget amendments. We had, that's the opportunity to tell us what you need does not always mean you're going to get it. The pie theory, pie is only so big. We got to slice it certain ways. Whether you get a big piece of pie or a small piece of pie, just need a good budget and go ahead and look at ways to cut costs because it's going to be a tight year.
Mr. Truman?
No, I just second all of that. Prioritize needs, be proactive in trying to plan ahead as best as possible. Things come up in emergency situations, but a lot of things can be accounted for prior to them being the needs and just kind of utilize your funds effectively. Be aware of what issues you've had in the past budget years and try to account for those moving forward.
Mr. Hocken?
Well, we can't be all things to all people. We don't have enough money to do. So we are going to have to, you know, you're going to have to prioritize and be realistic. And like Commissioner Craddock said, we do not want to see a lineup of people wanting budget amendments. Be realistic. You know what, look at what you did last year, know what your issues are this year. And if you have some things coming up that you know, spread them out. If something has to be done within a couple of years, you know, do it gradually. There are some ways because it's going to be a tough budget year, folks. I'm just telling you. Inflation hits government, too. You go to the grocery store, you see what you're paying nine. But when we're buying supplies or our departments are, that hits them, you know, their budget as well. And so costs with, you know, labor, insurance, benefits, all go up. So it is going to be very tight.
Okay. The expectations of the board is that all agencies that receive appropriations from the board turn in your, submit your annual report now. They're due, I know they're due in March or late February. We need them now because we have so much uncertainty with inflation and other costs. So if you, if any agency or outside committee, like a housing committee, you know, just an example, submit your budgets on time or early. We need to see what it looks like in our budget instead of waiting till the last minute or don't submit it. I'm going to have the board clerk send notices of reminding people, committees or whoever, about submitting their budget so we can take a look at it. And when you, if you need, like we saying, if you need, ask, when we have these budget amendments after July 1st, it hurts the budget. It's no longer, it's no longer balanced. Because then we got to go back in there and make, make some decisions that we should have known ahead of time or the staff, the finance staff. We have a hardworking finance staff. We want you to be sensitive to that. And the county departments heads needs to draft their next year's budgets now because they're going to ask you to sit down with them to go over your budget. And please be sensitive to the workload they're going to have. And go on and department heads, you can do your budget now. I mean, we have six, what, four months, five months before we have to hit that deadline of whatever to get to July 1st. So go on and do it now. Account for inflation, only ask for what you need. That commercial, only ask for what you need. If there's something else along the way, we know that some things are going to happen. And to that end, the expectation I have is that we have a contingency fund if we can afford it. We cannot not afford it. Why? Things are going to happen. That will negate these budget, you know, some of these things that we just don't know. And not to have on a contingency fund like we had the year before, we didn't have one last year. It's not a good practice or best practices for a county budget or any budget. You suppose, you have a savings account, as some people do. A contingency fund is just a contingent on, and we had a lot of things happen this, this current year, budget year, that we didn't, we didn't anticipate. And then the county manager and the staff had to figure out, well, where's that money coming from? Even though we had the need, we had to pay it, but if we had a contingency fund, it's already in the budget. I don't know what that's going to look like depending on what the budget looks like. You heard our financial report from the, from the auditor, but we need a contingency fund. Appropriations need to come on in and, you know, we're going to hold tight to those. I'm saying it right now. If we gave, if we submitted, or you, if we appropriate you $7,000 last year, you're going to get $7,000 this year. You know, we're going to have to cut somewhere because we are looking at the county as a whole. Also, we need to, to make sure that we communicate, you know, with the finance staff in a timely manner and make sure things happen. Amend the meeting schedule. You have that in your packet. The reason it's in your packet because I looked at what the challenges we have going forward and looked at, some of them were blank as far as what the staff, what we voted on in December. So we didn't know some of the things that we know now. So if you look at it, we look at the... And I'm going to combine something, but looking at the red first, that's the budget. That's the budget meeting schedule that they, that I filled out, looking at the calendar, trying to make sure that we don't, that we don't miss the deadline and the staff just doesn't get to it and have to work 24/7 to get that, that budget done. So that's in the red. Okay? Now, y'all still looking?
Well, it was up here.
It was in the stack that it was today, yeah.
It's somewhere. Craddock can't find anything tonight. So anyway, it's too many, we got a lot of paper tonight. But anyway, the red are the budget schedule and it's up to the staff and they look at it, they say, but this is not going to work. That's fine. It's just there's something to focus us on so we keep on task, we keep moving forward and not get stuck. So the red is for the staff to really look at, but we need to amend this now because as we leave here, we won't have another regular meeting till February the 15th. And the months are beginning to move quite quicker. I don't know what's going on. But that's why I've sat down with this and I'm showing it to you tonight. The green, I'm going to, I'm going to combine the county manager search with this. We are turning the, the search for the next county manager over to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. They're going to provide a comprehensive search and recruitment process. His name is Mr. Neil Emery. He's going to be here for one of those special meetings on January 31st at 6:30 to discuss with the commissioners, the process, qualities, characteristics, et cetera. And he's also going to assist the board in beginning the search for an interim county manager. So I wanted to announce that because I know people are wondering, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? We're going to be fine. And they don't charge anything, zero dollars. So it's not like hiring a firm, headhunters or whatever, and they do a fantastic job. So that's what's happening with the county manager search and interim county manager. It's being turned over to the County Commissioner Association. They're going to run it with our leadership. They're not telling us, but they're going to do all the paperwork, the advertising, the posting, the getting the interviews, the selection and all of that with our input. So he's going to be on the ground here on January 31st in person to discuss with the commissioners. What do, what do we want? How much, we want him to do a comprehensive job. He asked me when I was talking to him, because he reached out to me. He asked me, well, how much you want us to do? I said everything. Just do everything. That way our hands are off of it. They will submit the paperwork and whatever they're doing to us. We can discuss it and keep moving because all of us have things to do. And it's a, it's a clean process. And the most important thing, not the commercial, it's free. So we're going to do that. That's why you see the green there. And I'm asking the staff on, by February 3rd, if, or later, we need, the commissioners need a county project update, okay? We need to know where we are on county projects. Those things that we know we have to do. I don't want every little thing. We don't need every little thing. We just need to know where are we with county projects in this county. So as we move forward with a new county manager or whatever, even the interim, we have a list so we can keep eyes on it with the staff. We're trying to assist the staff. We're not trying to get into the day-to-day. We're not. We know we're governors, but we need to know what we're governing. We do. And so we have projects, I know are active, some are, you know, we need to do some things with them. And we just want to make sure that if we are needed for input or assistance, we know what we're assisting with, we know what we're doing. And I want the staff to understand, we support you, the finance staff, all the staff in this county, we support you, but as governance, the governing body, we need to know what we're governing. We need to know what's going on, not to get into it. And staff, please, don't be calling the commissioners. If you have a question, you call the staff. The staff is downstairs. They're still here. They haven't gone anywhere. And neither have Mr. Wilson. Okay? So let's get on board with this. I need to, a motion to amend this meeting schedule. And we know it's probably going to change because that's what we did last year. We changed some things because, you know, whatever. But I want some focus proactively for the staff and for us to know, oh, on this date, this is what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, and also, not interrupt you, but...
Go ahead.
There's certain people we need here, there's certain things, and we've got to work around their schedule also.
There you go. That's why, there you go.
And that's, that's why I will, will be making some of these adjustments.
And people need to know where they're supposed to be, when they're supposed to be there and not be, though we changed something and they didn't have a, they have a meeting schedule now. And if we tweak it, we'll let the staff know or whoever, and we may call people into a, to a meeting just to discuss something. We need to have hands on for a while, not the day-to-day. I'm not doing council payable. We ain't going to do council receivable. No, we're not going to close out anything. What we need to know, where are the dates so the staff can know, oh, I got to get this in on time. Okay? Get it in on time. And I'm asking the staff, please, please pay attention to your budget this year if you never paid to afford it again. And ask the staff for assistance. But now, they're not going to do your budget for you. I'm saying it. I know they're not hearing it, but they're going to be listening when they, when Curry get this thing recorded and online. You heard it from the, from the governing body. They're not going to do your budget for you. So don't come to the meetings or whatever they're setting up for you thinking all you got to do is bring a template. No, you are the department head. You should know how to do your budget and be realistic. And for the outside agencies, clerk, please look at the schedule with the county manager. The school system always comes with their, with their presentation in PowerPoint. And I was asked by the superintendent not too long ago, when are we going to start? And I says, I don't know. So we need to, y'all need to sit down. I'm saying this to the clerk and to the county manager. Look at this with the staff and say, okay, when are we going to start these meetings of just sitting down with the initial meeting so that they know what's going on, what they're going to be proposing in their budget? We'll stay out of it until it is appropriate for we to jump in. Commissioner comments? Oh, Lord.
Amendment. I mean, are you expecting department heads at the February 3rd meeting? What?
What I'm expecting is a list of some of the projects that we have. It's simply, it's simply like we have projects going on, okay? We need to know those major projects that's going to be turned over to the interim. We don't know, in other words, we don't want to be here and say, well, somebody say, you know, this project was due or this contract was due or this or something, I don't know what it is. It doesn't have to be so, so busy and a big, you know, shut down the department to get this. I know there's some projects that's ongoing that we're going to have to address. We, all we want to know is what they are so we can make sure they're turned over appropriately. And if that doesn't work, like I said, if those dates do not work, then let the staff submit some more dates because they do the work. We don't. We just trying to make sure we got a focus and we're moving toward the due date of July 1. And that the staff know, no, you cannot play with this. You need to, you need to get this in on these due dates. Okay? That's all.
I make a motion.
I'll be discussing, I mean, I met, I talked with Beverly today and I'm going to try to have a more in-depth discussion with her to try to come up with the timeline.
That's perfect.
On that, as far as, because I thought, right, you know, we need to get the request out to the, to the department. to the, to the departments, we're only a few weeks behind where we were last year, and last year was earlier than what the county had usually done, but just letting you know that February 3rd, that is a Friday night at 6:30.
And?
That's what I was asking you.
I know, I saw, I looked at, I had, I had the 12-month calendar right in front of myself, I said, well, if it doesn't work, that's what, that's why I'm saying, take it to them, if they don't want or cannot come that night, choose one.
Well, that's why I was asking, department heads, were they, because their projects, they're going to need to be in touch.
Like I said, we need to see the list of projects so we know what we're turning over. They're the department heads, this is, this is something, this is, this is a subject that the commissioners are saying to department heads, this is what we are amending it to because we're not going to kill the staff because somebody doesn't want to come to a meeting, or we have a project, we didn't have anything, we didn't know, the next thing I know, I got a phone call, and that's all this is, and it can be as comprehensive if they want, they may forget one, maybe don't put something up there, but those major things that can cause challenges, that's what we need to know from, from, from the staff, because I don't know what they are, and because they're a project, they don't need to be up here, that we don't need to know, because they're going to handle it, but we don't want to have phone calls coming in from, from somebody talking about something we should have known about, and then the staff got to
That we didn't think something that we didn't know.
We just need to know those major things that could cause challenges if it's not done, or if it's not visible to somebody besides some, some staff member that put it on a desk somewhere, and next thing I know, I get a phone call and I'm calling these people or somebody. It can be as comprehensive, or it's something that, I just think that this is a way to focus people, if you don't give people, as soon as possible isn't a date, it never has been for me, it has never been, you have to give a date certain, and it always can be amended, but if you don't give them a date, they're turning it when they want, if I didn't, if you don't ask for it, they're going to say, you didn't ask for it. I've heard people tell me, we ain't never done something, not about this, but we ain't never done it before, well, you're doing it now, because that's, that's what causes problems.
We just need to know.
We just need to know. We're not going to mess with it, but at least we have visibility of it, so if it comes up, we've seen it, it's not, and what is this, and what, why is, you know, and we know who to call, it's information that the board is requesting that we receive, and if there's an issue, when you take it down to the administrative staff, just let, just let us know, and Mr. Al too.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt this new, this post-schedule.
On second.
Properly moved in second, all in favor?
All right.
Almost there. Commissioner comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner Truman?
Okay, yeah, I mean, first off, I just want to mention myself and Commissioner Browntry attended the training with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and UNC School of Government this past week, it was incredibly informative, we had the opportunity to meet Mr. Neil Emery, and he was very encouraging as to what they had to offer, I was actually quite impressed with the services that the NCACC did offer and had available, and like you had mentioned, at no cost, which is a big thing, had the opportunity to do some networking, we had a networking reception where we were able to communicate with other county commissioners, other county managers from across the state, it was pretty encouraging to come back and see this request here for what we had just discussed with the amended, it seemed like those that seemed to be the most comfortable with their positions in their counties in areas of service were the ones that in December and January began going to their departments and asking for exactly that, what is happening, so hearing that coming right back was pretty encouraging. I will say, and I'll say, I had a lot of notes tonight, I had a few other things I was going to mention, but I think that that right there was kind of the most important, the takeaway of the ethics training and the training in general, but then also that we're coming back and seeing what I'm seeing, what I was hearing from some of those other successful counties and county managers and boards and seeing that we're already having it implemented, so that's encouraging.
Okay. Commissioner Hopler?
Thank you for all coming tonight, it's always good to see our citizens at these meetings, hopefully you will go away realizing there's a lot of moving parts in county government, and we try to be knowledgeable on each and every one of them, and that's sometimes very difficult, but, you know, I think the county is in a good place, I think we will, I think 2023 will be a good year for us as we get a handle on water, and that's our number one goal this year, I think, is water, getting that in straight, we certainly have some old goals, but anyway, it's been a long day, a long night, we appreciate your sticking with us, and I'm ready to go home, so I'm going to stop talking.
Commissioner Craddock?
Just echo what Mr. Hopler said, it is always good to see attendance, most of y'all hung in there, I would have waited through tonight, it's been, I don't know, four hours.
But for some of it's been longer.
But thank you for everybody that came up and spoke during the public comments, especially during, I can't even think what it's called, man.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, on the water department, we do like to hear your thoughts and the way y'all look at things too, I mean, there's no difference than you and I, we all have valid points and different ways of looking at things, so once again, thank you all for coming out tonight.
Commissioner Browntry?
I want to thank Gates County citizens for your attendance, I had the opportunity to attend the Trillim Healthcare Services Board meeting on January the 10th, currently our director, Mr. Baker, Mr. Blan Baker, he will be retiring, and Mrs. Bobby Lowe is going to be the new director. On February the 15th at our next commissioner meeting, however, Mr. Director, the director, Mr. Blan Baker, he will be giving the annual report for Trillim Healthcare Services. Also, I had the opportunity to, on December the 8th of last year, to attend the Gates County Community Garden initial meeting, this meeting is a meeting to draw the interest of the citizens for a community garden, a lot of great information was given concerning the benefits of a garden. Also, for further information, contact Sheila Hayes, and there will be a Zoom meeting on January 26th for those who are, you know, have further interest in obtaining a community garden for Gates County. Thank you.
My updates are as follows, the Chamber of Commerce has reached out to the Small Business Center to partner with them to provide resources to new and existing businesses in the county, the link will be placed on the county website, if there is a flyer, Mr. Silver sent that notice last night, so if there's a flyer that we can get our hands on, if people would share it with us, we will place that accordingly in the clerk's office and county buildings and anywhere else that we can be of service, we thank them for reaching out to the Small Business Center on behalf of the chamber and the citizen. Also, on January the 25th, 2023, you might have seen that at 11 o'clock, there would be a ceremony installed in an electric vehicle charging station on Highway 13 at Tar Heel, everyone is invited, at that meeting, there will be Ms. Kimberly Mack Jones, she's the congressman, she's Congresswoman Don Davis' field representative, so she'll be in the county, and she asked to meet with me in the county matter or whoever, or another, I can't have one more county commissioner with me after the ceremony, and I says, yes, we will meet, we'll come back here to use the county's, county board, the commissioner's boardroom to meet with her for a few minutes, she wants to get to know Gates County, she's not familiar with Gates County, but Congressman Don Davis is now in Washington DC, so we need to meet with her, like we need to meet with everybody else. Also, you're going to hear more about, and I shared this with the commissioners, that we're going to look at a capital improvement plan for the county, we don't have one, we have one for water and wastewater, but we don't have a capital improvement plan for the county, we have a lot of needs in our buildings and other infrastructure needs, and but we don't have a plan, a long-range plan, three to five years, five to 10 years, whatever, and to do, when we have that, it'd be more efficient in planning our small, we don't, we're resource short, we don't have a lot of funding, and we need some of these buildings upgraded, we need some of the infrastructure put, and just to keep doing it when somebody asks for it, it's not efficient or effective, we can't plan like that, that will lead to a planned budget as well, because when you do that, you're also prioritized, and that will change, but at least you have a guide, three to five years, five to 10 years going forward, so that we can get to a prioritized planned budget, that's what we need, especially in a county that has lack of resources. I've also spoken with the county attorney, he's looking at our bylaws as far as amending them, there are some things, this is, our bylaws is how we conduct our meetings and how we do things, and I've asked him to look at that, I have a few concerns about how we run this, our business meetings, nothing that's not, nothing that's going to take away anybody's right to, to, to public comment or whatever, but there's certain things, I am concerned sometimes about security, they talk about security in other buildings, I'm responsible as the chair and the county manager for the safety and security that everybody comes to this meeting, these meetings, and sometimes people have said they don't feel comfortable in these meetings, I do, for the most part, sometimes I don't, but putting that out there, I have to make sure that our bylaws protect everyone that's in these meetings, everybody's right to free speech is protected, but there are certain things that we just got to get a handle on in these, in the business meeting of this county, so you'll hear more about that, and I've already spoken to the county attorney about that, looking at them, to add to, take away, do something to them, but just to look at other counties, I've been doing that as well. The personnel policy, I'm hoping to, to have that in draft form soon, right now we're under that ordinance that we've been talking about for, I don't know, a year, year and a half, and we need to get that settled. Mm-hmm, we need to get that settled, we're searching for a human resources person, we're searching for a grant writer, we're searching for an assistant manager, we're searching for, what's the other one? What is it? I think that's it, but we're searching, and we're going to keep on searching, and let me close with this, when I talk to other counties and I talk to, to the auditor, and they say that we're a small staff, but the accountability is just like you in Charlotte, it doesn't change, they don't care how small you are, what you don't have in place, the same accountability they have for a large county is the same accountability that we, they have for rural, small areas, but it works our staff to definitely have 15 hats on one head, and that's how things fall through the cracks, and sometimes they're not even credentialed to do what we ask them to do, we just give it to them, then they're trying to get training to do it, I'm just saying that to let you know, we are on top of things, this, this board is trying to do the best we can with the resources we have, but sometimes we're resource short and we have to shore it up, so these are some of the things you're going to be hearing from the board, I'll put it on the floor and we'll go from there, I thank you for coming, I thank you for being patient, meetings are not going to last this long, I had to bring things from the fall to January to get it off the books, so we can address the challenges of 2023, and that's what, that's why it was so long, and we're not going to continue to kick cans down the road three and four and five times, you know, we're going to try to resolve it best we can and move forward, because we have a lot of issues that's going to come to us in this spring, one of them, the first one is the budget, we have to get the budget, the second one is water, wastewater, hope we get funding, if not, we're going to have to shell out some money, the third is housing, because we're still repairing housing, we got one more replacement home to go, and the last one is, the other one is broadband, that's moving right along, and the last one, economic development, so we have those pillars sitting there, and I'm honest, when we ask you to, we give you the opportunity to serve on committees, that's when you have the most impact, because you're like-minded or different opinions, but you work together as committed, and then bring the recommendations back to this board, so when you see the announcements come out about committees, not only the new ones, but standing committees, please consider joining those committees so that we can have recommendations from a broad-based force of the people in Gates County. Thank you again, we assure you, this will not happen again.
Can I say one thing? Can I say one thing? Jams is Friday, Saturday morning, 8:30 to 10 o'clock, I believe, is our distribution.
That was a good one, all right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All approved?
Yeah.
No.
I think I have.